Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate your time and participation as we work together to serve our community. I'll begin with the roll call. So council, when I call your name, please say here or present. Mayor Maxton.
Here.
Councilmember Stroop.
Here.
Roden.
Here.
Olvera.
Here.
Pearson. Parker.
Sure.
And Swarick.
Here.
With seven members of council present, a quorum is declared.
Thank you, Christina. Would everybody please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Man, we have a big group. That sounds really good. I'd like to remind everybody that we do live broadcast this meeting. And would like to thank everybody that's in attendance here in the room. And welcome all those that are joining us by the live broadcast. If you do get an opportunity to speak as part of this meeting, I do ask that you use, that all comments be made from the podium over here with the microphone. And the reason for that is the individuals that have joined us by the live broadcast cannot hear the comments. If you do speak from the chairs that you're sitting in. And if you do get an opportunity to speak, I'd ask that you introduce yourself. And if it's a resident, please state if you're a resident of Fair Oaks Ranch or not. And if you're here with a company or organization as part of our meeting tonight, just please state which company you are here from. And with that, we'll move on to our citizens to be heard tonight. And as a reminder, as part of our citizens to be heard, in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council may not discuss or take action on any item which has not been posted on the agenda. And then I ask all individuals that do speak as part of citizens to be heard to please limit your comments to five minutes. And we did have one individual that signed up today. Mr. Madura?
Yep. Hi, my name is Ron Madura, and I live in Fair Oaks Ranch on Reva Ridge. I'm here tonight on behalf of many neighbors who care deeply about protecting and preserving the natural beauty of, finds our community. I'm presenting a petition signed by over 100 Fair Oaks Plan homeowners and requesting the city to adopt a tree preservation ordinance for our homeowners, not just the vendors and people that are doing development. In fact, there's a number of people here that have signed the petition, so just want to let you know that. Recently, several properties in our neighborhoods have been, have seen extensive tree loss, mature trees and other native trees cut down without oversight. These trees are part of what makes Fair Oaks Ranch special. They provide shade, wildlife habitat, and help define the rural character we all moved here to enjoy. Once they're gone, they're gone for generations. We are respectfully asking the city to adopt a homeowner's tree preservation ordinance. The ordinance we are proposing would simply require permit removing large, healthy trees defined as standard or heritage trees and include a process for replacement or mitigation if removal is necessary. This approach is common in many Texas communities and strikes a fair balance between property rights and environmental stewardship. Our petition has signed or has signatures from Fair Oaks Ranch residents from across multiple neighborhoods. This shows a clear and growth support for reasonable tree protections. I think one of the things that helped people focus on our trees in our community is the fact that we have a problem with live or with oak wilt. And I think there's a lot of communication now, and I think there's even a class on that. So I think that's helping people focus on the fact that we need to keep our trees at least important to what we do in the community. So with respect, we ask the council and the mayor to consider placing a tree preservation ordinance on an upcoming agenda for review and discussion. We are happy to assist staff or serve on the committee to help draft language that works for everyone. I have the petitions here, so I'm going to give them to Christina. And if, I know you can't ask questions or anything, but that's where this is going to be. So all the petitions have been signed, they're going to go to Christina now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Madura, thank you for your comments and for being here tonight. And yes, trees are important to the city of Fair Oaks Ranch. Mr. Madura was the only one that signed up as part of citizens to be heard tonight. Is there anybody else here this evening that didn't get an opportunity to sign up that would like to speak? All right, no hands, then we'll move on to our presentations. We have two presentation items tonight, and the first is the recognition of Arbor Day. And here in Texas, we celebrate Arbor Day on November 7th, which is tomorrow. And Arbor Day is dedicated, a day to planting trees, educating individuals on the benefits of trees and recognizing the character that trees provide to our community, very much in line with Mr. Madura just presented. As the ranch developed into a, was originally, was Ralph Fair Senior built this ranch. Obviously, he named the ranch Fair Oaks Ranch, and the oaks coming from the significant character of all the oak trees that make up our area. As the ranch developed into a city, we have found a way to manage that growth around the oak trees that make up our city, showing how important that they are to us. And many of these oak trees that you'll find within our community are over 100 years old. And you'll even find some that are over 200 years old. And if you think back 200 years, that's the mid 1800s. And the history that these oak trees have seen in this area during that timeframe. And I reckon it really signifies how important they are to the community. And as was mentioned earlier, oak trees don't grow that fast. And if you do remove a 200-year-old oak, it will not be replaceable in our lifetime. And so that signifies how seriously it is for our city and how we recognize the oak trees as part of our community. Currently, within our UDC, we do provide guidelines for new developments, which places an importance on building around the trees that make up our community. And we also have a program for treating oak wilt, and I think we're going to talk about that later tonight, that we have implemented with the help of city staff. Really came up with the program and now implementing it, but provides an opportunity for our residents to treat oak wilt and for us to provide some assistance encouraging them to do that. And so all trees, especially our oak trees, significantly contribute to the character of Fair Oaks Ranch. And today, as we celebrate, well, tomorrow, as we celebrate Arbor Day, we want to reflect on that, how important the trees are to us. And so we do have a ceremony tomorrow morning at nine o'clock. It'll be right here on the city campus. It'll kick off with some introductions. Emily Stroop, councilmember Stroop, will be our keynote speaker for the Arbor Day ceremony tomorrow. And then we're going to plant a tree. And then in line with Arbor Day, we have a tree giveaway, and we have 109 trees that the city is donating to residents. And it was part of the wastewater treatment plant mitigation efforts, but the 109 trees. And I believe that when we did that, they opened the reservations for those trees at like one o'clock in the afternoon on a Friday. And by five o'clock, all 109 had been reserved. So we look forward tomorrow to seeing all the residents come through and pick up their trees. We did put together a proclamation for this event and reads, "Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees. And whereas Texas Arbor Day is observed on November 7th, 2025, and this holiday serves as a reminder to recognize the significant role that trees play in Texas. And whereas each of us can do our part to preserve the natural beauty of Texas by educating ourselves on environmental matters while planting trees which will preserve the natural aesthetics of the hill country for generations to come. And whereas trees can be a solution to reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas our city originated from the development of the Fair Family Ranch, and both the city and ranch were appropriately named out of the appreciation for our historic and majestic oak trees. And whereas trees within our community help preserve the natural beauty that makes Fair Oaks Ranch an attractive and favorable place to live in. And whereas the preservation of trees is a consideration in all aspects of our continued growth as a city. And now and therefore, by the city council of the city of Fair Oaks Ranch, we do hereby proclaim that November 7th, 2025 is Arbor Day in our city, and I encourage all citizens to care for their trees, recognizing the value that they add to the city of Fair Oaks Ranch." And thank y'all. Go Trees! And we have one more presentation item for tonight, and that is recognizing our employee of the quarter. I'll turn it over to Joanna.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. So we are very excited to announce our employee of the quarter for quarter four of this year. So Ms. Sarah, if you could come stand up next to me. So this quarter is, it goes from July of 2025 through the end of the fiscal year, September 2025. And this quarter has gone to, again, Ms. Sarah Klobowski. She is our Animal Services Officer here at Fair Oaks Ranch. And she just has really truly embodied the spirit of service and community that we value here on the ranch. She, Sarah received three separate nominations, which in a small city, that's a lot. Just recognizing her overall compassion and her initiative and her leadership in her role and in her department as well. And over the past few months, she's gone above and beyond from helping organize the Kerrville flood relief efforts and securing supplies for families in need to creating and leading our first ever Pup Tempest event, which was not that long ago. And that kind of just brought together like not only our community, but local businesses, adoption groups, and obviously our residents for a day focused on animal care and community connection. She's also introduced a fun new way to highlight adoptable pets through our police department's social media platform, helping both our officers and our furry friends make new meaningful connections. So Sarah's creativity and her reliability and it has just really thrown, shown through in the heart of this community, just making a really lasting impact on her team and the city of Fair Oaks Ranch. So we do just want to congratulate Sarah on being recognized by her peers as employee of the quarter for quarter four of 2025. And as always, we have a nice little plaque for her recognizing this, so she can put it up in her home or work area, wherever she so wants. And we'll get a picture of you right over there. Absolutely. You earned it all by yourself. All right. Thank you so much.
You know, Sarah's only been with us, how long have you been here? Six months?
February 27th.
So 10 months. Have made a significant impact during your timeframe here, and which is signified that recognized by your peers as the employee of the quarter. Sarah, thank you for all that you do for the city.
Thank you so much.
I'll say that, this before, but since Sarah started, it's like I see her everywhere. She's always doing something. Every time I leave a rain tree, it's like, oh, there's Sarah. I wonder what she's up to.
We'll move on to our consent agenda for tonight. We have two items on the consent agenda. First is the approval of the October 16th, 2025 city council meeting minutes. And second, consideration possible action on canceling the January 1st, 2026 city council meeting. Is there any council member that would like to remove any of these items from consent to consideration? Everybody good? Good? And can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? From Emily in a second, from Keith. All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. With that, we'll move on to, we have two public hearings on the agenda for tonight, both related to the property for the elevated storage tank. The first public hearing is on a proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan to designate the land use classification as community facilities for approximately 2.923 acres located in the southern portion at 329 Ammon Road, Kendall County, Texas. And Christina, I have the time now, is 6:46. And I am opening the public hearing, and I'll turn it over to Jessica for the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Maxton. Good evening, councilmembers. Good evening, attendees. My name is Jessica Ralucio, City Planner for the city of Fair Oaks Ranch. This item is a public hearing item that is city-initiated for a future land use map or flume amendment for 2.923 acres. The item begins on page 10 of the agenda packet, in case you'd like to follow along. As a brief introduction, the applicant and property owner is the city of Fair Oaks Ranch. The city proposes to amend the future land use map within the comprehensive plan, specifically to designate the flume to community facilities for approximately 2.9 acres located in the southern portion of 329 Ammon Road, Kendall County, which is outlined in the red property here, and further images will be shown soon. Next, some history on the property. The city purchased the property in June 2025. After the annexation process began, and on August 21st, city council, public hearing, and first reading of an ordinance for annexation occurred. Thereafter, it was approved on September 4th, 2025. Next, for the flume and zoning of the property, Planning and Zoning Commission had a public hearing for the flume and zoning. They recommended approval to city council. And tonight is a city council public hearing for flume and zoning. What is flume and the comprehensive plan? The future land use map is part of the comprehensive plan, which is a living document, and it can change over time to better serve the future of development in the city. Some examples previously of amendments include the Arbor's Oak Bend Estates and Post Oak. The process for amending the flume is that it requires public hearings by PNC and city council, and then city council makes the final approval. Here's a closer look of the map and the subject property area outlined in red below the pink dashed property here in the area. It's showing it as currently undesignated for the flume. Therefore, now the city is requesting to designate it as community facilities for an elevated storage water tank for municipal water services. This is in alignment of community facilities, which is intended for facilities that provide governmental, religious, educational, healthcare, social service, and special facilities. And the buildings would be more larger-scale civic use type. Next, the criteria for reviewing a flume amendment includes that the flume is designated, flume being designated is consistent with the proposed use and that it is in alignment with the comprehensive plan's principles, goals, objectives related to environmental protection, economic development, and civic and public spaces, such as the preservation and the protection of waterways and floodplains, surface and groundwater resources, and to promote and encourage water conservation practices, promote quality development that is compatible with the neighboring area, and then to ensure civic buildings and civic spaces are given prominent sites. Next, city council is to consider the following to take action on the proposed amendment in accordance with the UDC. One, that it promotes the health, safety, or general welfare. Two, is consistent with the future land use amendment element of the most recent version of the comprehensive plan, is consistent with other goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan, and is in compliance with the Unified Development Code and other criteria deemed necessary to make the amendment. Then, in compliance with state and city regulations, on September 19th, staff mail to property owners, public notice letters. And then on September 21st, a newspaper was published of the public notice. And then September 22nd, the city's website was updated accordingly. And September 23rd, a sign was posted on the site as well. For next steps, tonight, city council will consider an act on the first reading of an ordinance for the flume amendment, then hold a public hearing on the zoning designation ordinance, and consider an act on the first reading of an ordinance. Thereafter, on November 20th, city council will consider an act on the final reading of each ordinance for flume and zoning. And that concludes this item. Thank you.
We did not have anybody sign up to speak as part of this public hearing. Is there anybody here tonight that would like to provide comments related to this topic? All right. Christina, I have the time now, is 6:51, and I'm closing this public hearing. And I'll turn it over to councilor for any questions. Any? Great job, Jessica.
Thank you, Mayor Maxton.
With that, then we'll move on to our second public hearing tonight, which is to consider the zoning request from this applicant and the property owner of the city of Fair Oaks Ranch to designate approximately 2.923 acres generally located in the southern portion of 329 Ammon Road, Kendall County, Texas, as community facilities. And Christina, I have the time now, is 6:52, and I'm opening this public hearing. And Jessica, do you have another presentation for this one?
Yes, it's similar. I'll just run through the key highlights for it for you all and for anyone that's watching as well. So, good evening again. My name's Jessica Ralucio, City Planner for the city of Fair Oaks Ranch. This item is a public hearing for a city-initiated zoning designation for approximately 2.9 acres. This item begins on page 29 of your agenda packet. And yes, it resembles the other public hearing item that we just covered for the flume amendment, so I will just be covering the key highlights. Applicant and property owner is the city of Fair Oaks Ranch. And the future land use map would be community facilities, as was just covered in the previous public hearing item. And the proposed zoning designation is community facilities, which is to be in alignment with the future land use map for this subject property. And then again, just for key highlights, the property is city-owned, and it was annexed into the city limits. And then Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval to city council. And tonight is the public hearing for city council. What is zoning? Following the comprehensive plan, the zoning regulations become effective, and the zoning districts entail districts entail that, and for instance, it's residential districts, commercial districts, or community facilities, and they're all in alignment with the flume, which is within the comprehensive plan. Some examples of previous rezones include Oak Bend, the Arbors, Post Oak, and the process for rezoning includes public hearings for PNC and city council, and then city council for final approval. And this map here also just shows an example of the zoning map currently as being undesigned and the subject property is right here again, below in red. Therefore, now the city is requesting to designate zoning to community facilities, again, in alignment with flume, and naturally to serve the elevated storage water tank. Next, the criteria for a zone designation includes that it is consistent with the proposed flume and use, the zone designation is consistent with the comp plan, specifically to preserve and protect waterways and floodplains, surface and groundwater resources, promote and encourage water conservation practices, provide quality development, and then to ensure civic buildings and civic spaces are given prominent sites. In accordance with the UDC, zoning changes may be approved when the following standards are met: one, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan; two, it promotes health and safety general welfare of the city, and is compatible with and conforms with the uses of nearby properties; four, the property is suitable for uses permitted by the proposed change; and five, infrastructure is adequate for the proposed use. Similar to flume, state and city regulations were provided and completed. September nineteenth, property owners were mailed, the newspaper was provided, city website, and a sign was posted on the website of the public hearings. For tonight, city council will consider an act on the first reading of the ordinance, and then November twentieth, city council will consider an act on the final reading of each ordinance for the flume and zoning. And that concludes this presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica. And again, we didn't have anybody sign up to speak as part of this public hearing either. Is there anybody here tonight that would like to bar vey comments at this time? And Christine, I have the time now is six fifty-six, and I'm closing the public hearing, and I'll turn it over to council for any additional questions. Everybody good? Okay. Well, thank you, Jessica. Pretty thorough in both.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Very thorough, not pretty thorough. With that, we'll move on to our consideration items tonight, and the first two consideration items are related to the public hearings that we just went through. First is item number ten, consideration and possible action to approve the first reading of an ordinance, amending the comprehensive plan to designate the land use classification as community facilities for approximately two point nine two three acres located in the southern portion of three twenty-nine Ammon Road, Kendall County, Texas. And Jessica, we covered all the information. Anything additional that you need to present as part of this?
No additional information.
Okay. And any questions from council?
We don't have questions, right? Like, anybody that knows me knows that. I for sure have lots of questions about everything, but we've already had them all answered, so.
Yes.
Yeah, we're good. I'm good.
And any comments or any questions from anyone here tonight? Okay, with that, can I get a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan designation, designated the land use classification as community facilities for approximately two point nine two three acres located in the southern portion of three twenty-nine Ammon Road, Kendall County, Texas? So moved. How about Scott? Made the motion, and Jonathan? Made the second? Any other comments from council? Discussion? Good? Good? With the motion on the table, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion is approved. And with that, then, we'll move on to the second item related to the zoning, consideration and possible action to approve the first reading of an ordinance designating the zoning district for approximately two point nine two three acres located in the southern portion of three twenty-nine Ammon Road, Kendall County, Texas, as community facilities. And Jessica, anything else we need to add to this one?
No additional information.
Any questions from council? Additional? Any questions or comments from anybody here tonight? Then can I get a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance designating the zoning district for approximately two point nine two three acres located in the southern portion of three twenty-nine Ammon Road, Kendall County, Texas, as community facilities? So moved. From Keith in a second. From Ruben. And any other further discussion from council? The motion on the table, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion is approved. With the approval of council, the next two items relate to the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, and with approval of council, I'd like to do item number thirteen prior to item number twelve. Anybody oppose? Okay. Then we'll move on to our next consideration item, which is item thirteen, which is the consideration and the possible action to approve a resolution appointing the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee Chair and Vice Chair. And I'll hand it over to Amanda.
Yes. Good evening, mayor and council. Amanda Valdez, Deputy City Secretary. This item concerns the appointment of the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee Chair and Vice Chair. Chairman Paul Maybin has stepped down, and that was effective October first. Another member has been appointed to that place by council. In accordance with the current rules of procedure, the council appoints these positions by resolution. At their October sixteenth meeting, the C I A C made a recommendation to appoint Chris Weigand to serve as the chair, and Gary Miller to serve as the vice chair. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have about the resolution or any of the members.
And I believe you stated Amanda, the, both the individuals were selected by the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee to serve in these positions.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions from anyone here tonight? Then can I get a motion to approve a resolution appointing to the Fair Oaks Ranch Capital Improvements Advisory Committee Chris Weigand as the chair and Gary Miller as the vice chair? From Dale? And from Emily? And any further discussion from council? Motion on the table, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved. With that, we'll move on to item number twelve, which is the consideration and possible action to approve a resolution amending the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee Rules of Procedure. And Amanda?
Me again. This item actually proposes several updates to the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee Rules of Procedure. The first change amends the rules to align with changes resulting from Senate Bill eighteen eighty-three, which increases the required industry representation on this committee from forty to fifty percent. Council has already made appointments to meet that requirement, and this amendment simply formalizes that update. Second, the amendment allows the committee to select its own chair and vice chair each fiscal year. This is consistent with how other appointed bodies operate. Currently, the chair and vice chair are appointed by resolution, as we just did, of the city council, and appointees hold that position until the appointment is rescinded or the member resigns. Should council approve amendments to the rules of procedure this evening, there will be no need to appoint chairs or vice chairs in the way we just did in the future. Third, we've clarified and streamlined the roles of the city secretary and the council liaison. The liaison is listed as being responsible for helping prepare agendas, and we are removing that because that's not the current practice, and the city secretary's duties were consolidated into one section for clarity. Finally, the meeting schedule is being updated to reflect the committee's vote to move their regular meetings to the third Tuesday in March and September, and this was done to avoid conflicts with municipal court hearings that were, that happened the first Thursday of, of March and September, which is when municipal court happens. So, the committee reviewed and unanimously recommended approval of these amendments at their October sixteenth meeting, and I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have about the document.
Questions? All right. Any questions from anyone here tonight? Comments? Can I get a motion to approve a resolution amending the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee Rules of Procedure? Emily in a second. From Ruben. And any other comments from council? Discussion? All good? With the, with the motion on the table, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion is approved. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
And then the last consideration item that we have on the agenda tonight is the consideration and the possible action to approve a resolution to accept a monetary donation from the Fair Oaks Ranch Homeowners Association in the amount of ten thousand dollars for the city's oak wilt program. And I believe Grant is sitting in tonight for Ithene.
That's correct. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Grant Watanabe, Public Works Director, and I am standing in for Ithene, who unfortunately wasn't able to be here tonight. Before I get started, I do want to introduce Shelley and David Fairhurst from FORHA. David serves as the FORHA Vice President. Got that right. So, for reference, this agenda item starts on page seventy-five of the agenda packet. Oak wilt is a serious disease that affects all oak trees, particularly live oaks and red oaks. The disease spreads through underground root systems and above ground through beetle activity, leading to the wilting of leaves and death of trees. Back in May, two thousand twenty-four, the city council established a tree mitigation fund and created an oak wilt program. This program provides annual funds to incentivize and aid in oak wilt treatment within the city limits through a reimbursement process. Property owners who participate in the program may apply for a reimbursement of up to fifty percent of the total cost of eligible services, with a maximum reimbursement of fifteen hundred dollars per property per fiscal year. Two years ago, the city budgeted ten thousand dollars for the oak wilt program. During that time, ten residents applied for the program, and all ten were reimbursed. Due to the success of the program and the growing need to control oak wilt, the city budgeted fifteen thousand dollars for the program last year. During that time, seventeen residents applied for the program, and fifteen residents were reimbursed. There were also additional residents who contacted the city to submit applications but were turned away due to the lack of funding, indicating a greater need for funding to support oak wilt treatment in the city. To assist the city in meeting the demand from residents, the FORHA Board of Directors approved a one-time financial donation of ten thousand dollars to the oak wilt program back on September ninth. The donation is intended to supplement the oak wilt program's current budget of twenty-five thousand, bringing the total amount available for reimbursement to thirty-five thousand. Staff recommends acceptance of the donation to provide additional reimbursement opportunities for residents, to mitigate the spread of oak wilt in the city, and to preserve a critical component of our landscape and the city's namesake. With that, I'll turn the microphone over to David, who wants to say a few words about oak wilt and how important it is to treat.
Thanks, everyone. If, if, and thank you, Greg, for helping me out getting started with help FORHA involvement with the oak wilt program. We've got a great resource that is available to us. Elizabeth Naiwu is our representative in Kerrville, who will actually come out to your house. You call her up, and she'll come out and look at your tree. As long as you don't have a commercial, Arbor is there, so. And she does a great job. She helped us out, has helped us out quite a bit. And in part of that, when you identify something, she and the city have been, this is a city map, where oak wilt is in our, in, in Fair Oaks, and there's some out, out there if you want them, and they're on the city website. The interesting thing to me is that, you know, this is a huge area of concern where it's grown a lot, but if you look in the very center of this, that's where the country club is, and if you've been here a while, then you'll have noticed that the country club had oak wilt, and we lost a few trees, but they injected and they stopped it, so it stopped there. If you look at these two tiny dots right here, across from that is Norman Vestal Park. And just this summer, I, I ride my bicycle by there quite a bit, and this summer, a resident called in and said, hey, I think it's oak wilt. So I went out there right away, and I said, I, I called Elizabeth and I said, I, I think it's drought. I don't think it's oak wilt. So she came out, and she, the very next day, or the, the next morning, she was out there. We met, and she showed me something in the leaves that you don't see when you look at the website. It doesn't look classical. So, it's a little sneaky. In, in that, in that term, I mean, she actually found a dead leaf that we pulled up and looked at it, and then I, she told me how to recognize it. In any case, we've now treated twenty-five trees. We've lost three. When you're talking about, you know, one of the trees is about this big, so that's a, at least a hundred-year-old tree. It's in a cluster of fifteen trees, so you don't notice it now once it's gone. But it's on the move. It moves about eighty feet per year when it gets into the root system, and it has no problem going under the, under the pavement. So, the Norman Vestal trees are right across from those two little red dots. So, it is on the move, and I really appreciate the city setting up the program, and what we'd like to do at FORHA, since ninety-three percent of the city's members is to, is to make that donation. It was a unanimous decision on the FORHA, so I hope you accept it.
Any questions or? Had a couple of comments for David. We mentioned Elizabeth. I, I believe Elizabeth is the representative from the Texas A&amp;M Forestry Service.
Correct.
And she does make herself available to come down and, and go through any area to help out. She's also a great source on recommendations for treatment. We also have Ithene, who is our environmental program manager here at the city, and for residents, she's a great source to get information to about oak wilt or to get information from about the treatment of oak wilt. And I believe she's also the one to contact related to the oak wilt treatment program that Grant mentioned earlier. I'd also like to compliment David for his efforts in fighting oak wilt across city. He is here tonight to present the check, but he's also held two community workshops on oak wilt here in the city, which have been well-attended, fifty to seventy-five individuals, I believe, each time, and he's aligned Elizabeth up, who's come out and presented along with Ithene as part of those workshops. Point being is that education is one of the big efforts that we need in making people to realize and recognize the impacts of oak wilt and what is needed for treatment so that our oak trees can survive the spread of oak wilt through those areas. So, thank you, David, for all your efforts and for being here tonight and the contribution that you'll present. Any other questions or comments from anybody else? Yes, sir?
David, just curious, when a tree is injected, as you mentioned, is, what kind of timeframe goes by before you can check to see how that is doing? I, I think you just mentioned it was, you, you went back and you saw that it had.
Yes, sir. I, yeah, I've heard it described as like chemotherapy, where it actually, it's hard on the tree, because what happens is the fungus is getting into the root system, and the tree reacts by closing off its pores, you know, trying to stop that fungus from going up into the tree, and in doing so, it stops the water from being pulled up. And this injection is probably some, it's a fairly nasty chemical, but it's gonna, you know, definitely kill, kill it, but it can kill the tree too. So, it, it, Norman Vestal, two were pretty much dead when we, you know, before we injected. The third one was looking a little, you know, maybe thirty to forty percent loss already on the big one, the one I described as being probably the hundred and fifty, two-hundred-year tree, and within a month, it was, it was completely dead. So, but you see, you see something happening, the rest of them all look healthy now, so that's been, and that injection has been just about a month. So, I think it can happen. And then, they recommend retreating in about. And then they recommend re-treating in about, I think it's 18 months, 18 months later. And two treatments is max, and not a good idea to so we do have, since it's in the roots, we said, you know, we went 45 feet, and she said, you should treat this set at 45 feet. But then there's a set over here at 80 feet. She says, don't treat those, because if you treat it now, and then it keeps moving through the root system, that treatment goes away, and then it's less effective later. So you're you're you really have to keep a keep an eye on it.
Very informative and interesting. Thank you, David. Appreciate it.
I'd like to say thank you, David, for championing this. And thank you to FORHA, you know, for just working so close with us on stuff. It just you guys feel like family, you know, and that's what I like about partly sitting in this chair is, you know, working with you guys on stuff, too. And this is this is what I'm here for. So thank you, guys.
Anybody else? Anybody else that attended the meeting want to make a comment? We're all ranchers, right? Then can I get a motion to approve a resolution to accept a monetary donation from the Fair Oaks Ranch Home Motors Association in the amount of $10,000 for the city's oak wilt program? From Jonathan? Emily?
I have a third.
I think he spoke up first.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to accept the check from David on behalf of the city?
Sure.
Is it a big one?
$10,000.
Oh, come on.
Any other discussion items from council? With the motion on the table, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We approve accepting the donation. Thanks, David. No big checks. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I do appreciate all that you've done. Do we need to get this into the to the right hands? That completes all of the consideration items that we had on the agenda for tonight. I believe we do have three workshop items. The first is a discussion on the SAWS Emergency Interconnect project update.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Stephen Fried, Assistant Director of Public Works. Tonight, I'll be walking you through the SAWS Emergency Interconnect project, providing you an update on where we stand, how the scope has evolved, and what direction staff is seeking for counsel. For a quick project summary, this project is designed to provide the city with emergency backup water supply by connecting our system with SAWS to serve Pressure Zone C. And Pressure Zone C is customers south of Detail Corn Ranch or Detail Corn Road, sorry. This will provide our water system resiliency during an extended power outage or a situation where our system cannot maintain normal flow or pressure. Initially, the project was planned near Fair Oaks Parkway and IH 10, but that location proved unfeasible due to the SAWS line being in a steel casing and additional easement needs. We've since identified a new alignment along Leslie Pfeiffer Drive that uses existing easements and SAWS infrastructure. We're currently in the design phase and anticipate construction beginning in the spring of 2026. Tonight, staff seeks council's direction regarding the revised location, scope, and cost. For a brief status update, in February of this year, the city entered into an agreement with KFREES and Associates for the design phase engineering services at a cost of just under $50,000. During preliminary investigations, KFA discovered an issue with the SAWS line being in a steel casing, which made the initial connection point unfeasible. To avoid acquiring new easements from Frost Bank, staff and KFA proposed relocating the connection to Leslie Pfeiffer Drive, where SAWS already has infrastructure in place. The additional design costs for this relocation, including survey work and construction phase services, is $40,695. Construction is estimated at approximately $352,000, which includes a 20% contingency. Staff has also met with Cinco de Mayo restaurant developers, who have verbally agreed to contribute $50,000 towards the project to meet their fire flow needs, which helps offset our cost. And just so everybody is aware, the Cinco de Mayo developers are on this lot right here, across from Schott's. To highlight some of the recent changes to the project's scope, the new proposed alignment replaces about 700 feet of existing three and six-inch lines with a 12-inch line. This design will be capable of delivering up to 1,000 gallons per minute, or roughly 8.1 million gallons, to our system. It's designed to maintain 42 PSI well above TCUQ's minimum requirements of 35 PSI, which means we can sustain adequate pressure in Zone C for about five to six days under peak peak demand if our system is offline. This project will significantly improve system reliability, operational flexibility. It ensures we have sustainable water sources during emergencies and reduces our risk to extended power outages. It also directly supports the city's strategic priority 3.1 Reliable Water Resources and benefits economic development along IH 10 corridor by improving fire flow for commercial customers. Finally, this interconnect positions us for potential wholesale water purchasing from SAWS in the future, a smart contingency if GBRAs anticipated water supply does not materialize. On this slide, you'll see a quick summary of the project financials. Total engineering is about 90,700, and estimated construction is 352,000, including a 20% contingency. After applying the developer contribution of $50,000, the city's net cost comes to around $393,000. The current budget for this project is approximately $382,000. The way forward, pending council direction tonight, staff will proceed as follows. In November, execute the design amendment and continue coordination with SAWS. In December, bring back the formal interconnect agreement and resolution to accept the developer's contribution. In February, publish the bid opportunity, award construction agreement in March, and we anticipate construction to start in May with a completion target of June 2026. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So Steve, what you're looking for tonight is guidance from council to move forward with this new location, and I guess the budget amendments that would go along with that.
Correct, sir.
Any questions?
It could still it could still be within budget, right? I mean, because the current but the current amount includes a 20% contingency, so.
That's correct.
Okay.
And some of the fees have already been paid for engineering upfront to do the preliminary investigations.
And I'll go ahead.
The 12-inch pipe is going down Pfeiffer?
Not necessarily going down, going from Les Pfeiffer towards the Frost Bank, towards Fair Oaks Parkway. So there's some easements that exist in between those lots. See if I can go back. If you can see that blue line with the red circle around it, that would be the path we'd be taking.
Mr. Pearson, I can't hear you.
And and the red lines on that photo?
It's just circling the line.
Okay.
Kind of highlighting the area.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Everybody else good? Any questions from anyone here tonight? So I guess from council, we're supportive of the direction that you want to go.
Sounds good. Thank you, sir.
All right.
Great presentation. You smashed it.
We'll move on to our second workshop item tonight, which is the compensation and classification study, final report, and the recommendations from it. Joanna?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Joanna Merrill, Director of Human Resources. And tonight I have here with me Stacy Witchell from Evergreen Solutions. She's the Director of Client Services for Evergreen, and she is going to be going over the high-level overview from the final report of this comprehensive study that we've done over the last few months. So I'm going to turn it over to her to go through her presentation. And then shortly following that, I will follow up with the presentation regarding recommendations and where council would like to direct staff to move forward from there. So with no further ado, I'll hand it over to Ms. Stacy.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody, Mayor, council members. Thank you for having me here. We'll go through the PowerPoint presentation. Feel free to stop me along the way if you have questions, or you can hold till the end. But we're going to walk through your study, just kind of remind you of what you've already seen, what you've already approved along the way, and then we'll wrap up and and just talk future and next steps. Quick reminder of just your study goals. It was to review the effectiveness of the city's current classification and compensation system. You want to assess the city's current classification, your positions to ensure internal equity, and look at your class plan system overall, the strengths and weaknesses of that plan. Survey your peers to look at external equity, to see where you align in that market, and be as competitive as you can afford to be within that market. Bring all that data in together to make the recommendations for the final class plan and the compensation plan. Project phases, we started off with the project initiation, the kickoff, the data collection, that evaluation, doing that internal review, your external review, that market analysis and comparison, and then again, recommendations, which is that final step that we're at now. For your internal review, just wanted to remind everybody where we started. We wanted to look at your pay grade system right now. You have quite a few pay grades. There's individual pay grades within that compensation plan. So we wanted to look at potentially reducing that number and then aligning those classifications appropriately. Potential maybe to widen those range spreads to fit your kind of needs and where you want to be from a compensation philosophy standpoint. We found that most employees were within 10% of their anticipated salary. That tells us that you don't have a significant issue with compression. Overall, your average tenure was four and a half years, and 90% of your employees are below midpoint of their current salary range. With your average tenure, though, of that four and a half years, though, that's about what we would expect. That tells me you've done some recent hiring, you've had some turnover, maybe a cohort has retired. So your employees overall, you don't have as many 20, 30, 40-year employees. Okay? Majority of employees are in the quartile one, little bit of compression within that quartile, but again, overall, you're looking good. Class plan reflected a lean staffing model. You had limited career levels in in many areas. Your public safety, where ranks are kind of built into their structure, you've got that. But in other areas, you did have, we found some limited opportunities for growth or succession within the levels. So we have some we have some recommendations in that and the report for that as well. External review, the purpose of that salary and market survey, we want to provide a big picture view of how the organizations pay and benefits compare to your external labor markets, your public sector peers around you. You had 50 benchmarks that we use there to look at that. And your benchmarks, those are your positions that you take to market. Those are the ones you want to see, I call them like your bellwether positions. It's the one, everybody has an accountant, let's look at that accountant. Everybody has, you know, these other positions. Those are your good positions that are good indicators to continue to track and follow moving forward. The 20 targets are peers. That's where we got your data from for those comparison purposes. The benchmarks, again, touch the light again, they're that that's your sample of positions or or all those classifications that you have, to really look to see how you do compare against those very standardized classes. And then market percentiles, when we talk about that, what we're talking about is where you fall within the market from a bell curve. So remember, you just a bell curve distribution, that median line there in the middle, where do you compare on either side of that median line? Okay? Just a quick reminder on the market, we had a little over 480 quality data points that we used to make the evaluation. The plant date, the pay plan data received, we did get some data from all of those different peers. And then for the benefit data, we got good benefit data from 17 out of the 20 peers. Your average range spreads for the city of Fair Oaks Ranch is about 47 and a half percent there. Your peer average is around 40%. Quick reminder still, public sector at that 50th percentile, this is where you fell in the minimum, the midpoint, and the maximum as compared to those peers. So at your minimums, you're about 6% behind on those minimum starting salaries, about 2 and 1/2% behind at the midpoint, and almost aligned to the market of the maximum. Okay? Now, looking at your benefits, and this is looking at at health benefits, and this is premium cost. So looking at the PPO, this is that slide here, this is the PPO. We'll look at the other plan on the other slide, next slide. So your employee premiums there, if you see where the employee cost percent differential column is, and I've got employee cost percent differential there. So that first column, the 26.12533, that's how much more you're paying on average than your peers. So you guys are contributing at a higher percentage rate than your peers for your benefits. The negative is that's how much less your employees are paying compared to the peers. So it gives you an idea that you guys have got a good plan that you're offering to your employees for the cost. And then looking at PPO deductible comparisons, went back and looked at those. You have the maximum out-of-pockets in the report. I went ahead and pulled the deductibles, too, so you can see that. And again, you're you're positioned well, lining up pretty well with market on the lower ends there. If you look at the individual deductible there, market average, about $2,000, yours is 750. So a much better, much better plan from a cost perspective for your employees. Looking at that EPO plan, looked at that in relation to how it would compare to those high deductible plans that some of the other peers have, HMO plans that some of the other peers have. And when you look at that one again here, too, you're paying 1.7% more than a comparative H high deductible plan, and you're paying about 15% more than those comparable HMO plans. So again, you're positioned well. There's a few of the different factors in there. When we looked at the max out-of-pockets, that you have a little bit higher cost, but overall, the risk to your employees is low. Deductibles on the slide again here, too. I'll pause and let let you guys take a look at that one really quick. For here, again, we're looking at those high deductible, the HMOs. The other, the other is in here, that other is a mixed bag of different plan offerings that different people have. It's more of an apple oranges comparison. I just want to give you an idea that there are other things out there that employees have, that peers have. For your benefits program summary, just looking overall, I'd call it a mixed market position. Now, you're very strong in some areas, individual medical coverage, your time off, not quite as competitive in others. Medical coverage, PPO and EPOs, PPOs, competitive for that employee-only coverage, employee costs and deductibles, a little bit of higher exposure for the maximum out-of-pockets. EPO, lower individual deductibles and strong premiums, but your EPO plan does not have an out-of-network option. Time off benefits, above-average vacation, sick leave, you have one additional holiday versus the peers. The main gap you have there is a lack of any kind of a parental leave other than the standard FMLA. Retirement, it mirrors standard Texas municipal practice, solid supplemental benefits, dental vision disability, life EAP, those are all there. They're not as big of key differentiators for your employees, but you do offer good plans. So some considerations, maybe some opportunities. Consider a paid parental leave, four to six weeks, that would align with some of the modern workforce expectations. Explored leave, sellback or rollover for greater schedule for benefit flexibility. Evaluate the cafeteria style or hybrid benefit credits to let employees tailor coverage their personal needs. style or hybrid benefit credits to let employees tailor coverage to their personal needs. We're seeing that a lot more with peers in public sector, where there's more of that kind of cafeteria à la carte kind of that employees can pick and choose. Strengthen workforce value. Review life insurance costs for efficiency. The amount you're paying for your life insurance plan right now is a little bit higher than your peers. So maybe there's an opportunity there to negotiate that down with your broker. Consider tuition reimbursement. That's one of the big things that we heard earlier in the study, and we see it with a lot of your peers, that ranges in value of what they offer. So 1,500 to 2,500 or so per semester with the other qualifying sideboards around it is typical of what we see. Another thing that you may also want to take a look at and at least educate your employees on is the public service loan forgiveness program. I've got almost 30 years in public service myself. Grew up in state agencies mostly, but that's an opportunity, especially in our counties and cities, where they can apply, and if they're eligible, there's some, for working in a public service, there's some loan forgiveness that kind of happens through that. Expand wellness and behavioral health offerings, preventative incentives, stress management, telehealth, maybe some other options there. So a quick reminder before we step into what we want to talk about with your plans itself, a little just findings from assessment of current conditions. Just a reminder, we were looking at reducing the number of pay grades. About half of the current pay grades you have in your system aren't ones that you use right now. So there's some room to consolidate that. Still give you flexibility to grow, but reduce some of that administrative burden. Widen the range spreads. Consider widening those range spreads. It's going to increase your earning potential and also align with your performance review system that you want to put into place. Maintain the separate plans. Keep doing what you're doing there for the civilian and non-civilian. That works well. Increase the steps. That's going to let you align that with your new system that you put in place, like I said before, with performance. Your number of grades, range spreads, midpoint progression, that's really all determined by analyzing that competitive market data, and we want to design ranges in a system that will attract, recruit, and retain quality employees. Just reminder of the plans that have already been reviewed. So this is your civilian plan. Here's part of it. It's a 30-step plan. Remember, we increased it from 18 steps to 30 steps. Increased your range spread slightly to 54 to account for those extra steps that we have in place. Here's the rest of those pay grades. And then for your non-civilian, increase that from 14 to 21 steps. And again, here's the, that's minimum and maximum of each one of those. For your classification system, there was a current, there were some classifications that we recommended updating title or realigning them based on what they were doing. So administrative clerk, we're recommending that that be changed to administrative assistant, administrative support specialist, also administrative assistant. Maintenance, custodian, maintenance worker, moving that up into custodian, simplify that title. Director of HR and Communications, let's simplify that back down to just Director of Human Resources. Director of Public Works and Engineering, again, just simplifying your title there, engineering manager, communications officer, and then that financial specialist. Really giving you a title there that can float between the different areas where a financial specialist would be expected to work. As you, as you kind of want to continue to grow and evolve and provide some succession planning with your employees for, just as the next group of folks begin to retire, want to give some opportunities for you to have a level one and two as appropriate. This is future. It's not being presented. Ask you to do it right now. It's just future considerations. Your court clerk, we did recommend moving to that one, two, three. That would align with the state certification and the tests that they have, and it would align the titles with the tests. Human Resources Assistant, Utilities Clerk, and then creating a senior Utilities Clerk to go with it. Financial Specialist, a one and a two. Your IT department right now, recommending, as your IT needs continue to grow, consider adding in a technician and analyst. Building Inspector, giving you succession planning, one and two, infrastructure, one and two. And then, at some point, look to do, and a lot of this gets subcontracted out right now, but that trade level, that master level, master level attrition, master level plumber, those positions, to be able to keep some of that working house, maybe not have to contract. Now, recommendations. So let's talk about the first one there. The first one is, conducting small-scale salary surveys is needed to assess the market competitiveness. And doing that on an annual basis, spot checking the market helps keep your market, helps keep your plan current, so the market doesn't get away from you. You want to conduct a comprehensive class and comp every three to five years. That's something you want to continue to do to make sure that you don't have drift in your plans and any other emerging issues or needs haven't kind of come up. Utilize an economic indicator to determine if a cost-of-living adjustment should be applied to the plan. You want to maintain that competitiveness in your market. So using those economic indicators to look to see what the market's doing, what the economy's doing around you, and then make adjustments as appropriate. Review and advise policies and practices for moving employees' salaries through the pay plans. You include procedures for determining salaries of newly hired employees, employees who've been promoted, demoted, transferred, lateral moves, maybe into different classifications. Use a placement schedule that aligns with a selected implementation methodology as a guide when you're hiring the new employees. Any questions? I'm going to go back to the recommendation slide. That's really the new stuff. Any, on any of these specifically, or any of it?
What went into determining the recommendations that you guys are making on adding levels to some of the job classifications?
For these.
Yeah. What was y'all's thinking behind looking at these and saying, these need extra attention?
For a couple ones. One, to give you, give your employees room to grow within those positions, and to give them, like the clerk, there's, as they go through those state tests, the one, the two, the three, allow their classification to follow those certified tests. And to give you succession planning. As somebody's getting ready to retire, they've taken a, with your inspectors, again, as they pass those other tests and certifications, and they're able to inspect a more complex buildings, construction, you know, whatever that particular inspector is doing, they can do more complex, commercial, residential, multifamilies, as opposed to just being able to do the one-family residentials, allowing that kind of room for that.
So that's what I thought, and your predecessor mentioned some hesitation about, you know, us maybe having the wastewater operator pegged just perfectly, but it's not on this list as a recommendation. So I'm just curious, it just seemed like it would be, you know, since you picked it all back up and looked at it again, and now we have these.
Which, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said. Which wastewater?
I believe it was the water wastewater operator three may have been the, the one that we were talking, Scott, do you remember which exact title it was? And he mentioned that, you know, I'm not sure that we've got this one right on the market, and one of the reasons was because these guys, like you're saying, have these extra certifications that they go get, that they can market themselves more effectively with, right? But in your recommendations here, I didn't, I don't see it here, so I'm just curious.
Do you want to respond, Dave?
So I think part of that consideration was, is we already have the levels built into the water and wastewater operator positions. So we do currently have level one, two, and three. There are differentiations between the different certification levels that they get, the licensures that they get to obtain those different levels. So that's why it wasn't on the list, because it is like our police department, where we already do have those career ladder movements in place. And then to supplement our water and wastewater operators, we also do provide certifications and stipend pay in some instances for some of those licensures that they obtain above and beyond those differentiated career ladders that we already have in place.
I'm okay in my confusion, I guess. I still kind of have the same question, but I understand, you know, we kind of already do it, and the recommendation was not to do anything extra, not to add any extra, an operator level four or something, you know, so we're just...
Well, what you have right now follows those certification tests?
Sure.
And so that's, that's what you would want to do, is align with those?
Sure.
If you want to do something above or beyond that, it would be going outside of those certification levels.
Yeah.
Which you could do, we don't see that very often. And it might be more than a city of your size needs right now.
Understood.
Good question. Anybody else? Any questions from anyone here tonight? All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
All right. So, good evening, Mayor, Council. Again, Joanna Merrill, Director of Human Resources here. So what I'm going to do tonight is go over the second half of this portion of the workshop, which is going to focus on the final report and the recommendations that we've just kind of highlighted from the, from the agenda packet. And this presentation, along with the corresponding items, starts on page 89 of your agenda packet. So what I'm going to do is walk you through a summary of each set of these recommendations, hopefully answer any questions, any specific questions that you may have about the final report in regards to these recommendations. But most importantly, what we are looking for tonight is to seek your guidance on key recommendations regarding what you consider non-starters, anything that you would like staff to develop further as a part of this for future consideration and adoption. So throughout tonight's presentation, I did want to note that you're going to reference the numbers next to each of these recommendations that I have listed here. I just want to clarify that these numbers do not directly correspond to any of the numbers in the actual final report. Kind of what I decided to do was create a nice, easy-to-view exhibit for you and just outline them in easy bullet points. So they don't correspond directly, but we will go through each of them, and I will try to reference what page numbers those general recommendations reference in the final report. All right. So overall, the study found that our benefits package, as you heard earlier, remains one of the city's greatest strengths, particularly our fully-paid employee-only medical coverage, our TMS retirement plan, and our generous leave accruals. However, it was also identified that there are some opportunities for us to strengthen and grow in our competitiveness in regards to our dependent coverages, the paid parental leave, tuition reimbursement, and consideration of possible leave buyback programs. So as mentioned, these are reference numbers. Again, they don't tie directly back to the final report, as they are in multiple locations in that final recommendations chapter. This particular summary section can either be located on Chapter Five, which is page 143 of the agenda packet, or again, as part of the Chapter Six recommendations, starting around page 171 for your reference. So under these first two recommendations that I have listed, 5.1 and 5.2, Evergreen recommends maintaining our current employee-only and healthcare coverage, which again, is already strong, but it does recommend reviewing our dependent tier deductibles for those out-of-pocket maximums as part of a future budget cycle, along with introducing the potential consideration for city contributions to plans that contain health savings accounts, again, just as a future option for consideration. Now, recommendations in Section 5.3, or 5.3 and 5.4, highlighted in the screen on this slide here. Both of these focus on consideration of addition of new programs to support work-life balance and professional growth within our organization. So if council so desires, staff would bring these items back for a future meeting. We would develop a paid parental leave policy for you to review and adopt, along with a tuition reimbursement policy, again, for formal consideration approximately in this upcoming December, maybe January 2026 meeting cycle. Now, Recommendation 5.5 does address our life insurance, and the final report does state that the city's coverage is, again, competitive in this area. While we might be able to look at some of the per-employee costs here, Evergreen is just recommending that we do that annually, which again, is something that is already being performed in coordination with our benefit broker, Hub International. We do this on an annual basis every year, as our medical coverage is only on a one-year renewal for those purposes. So again, staff will just continue to review this as a part of our ongoing benefits and maintenance process. But as we move on to Recommendation 5.6 regarding these leave accruals, the final report found these to be very strong. In some instances, definitely more generous than, than when compared to our benchmark peers. So no further action is needed to change what we currently have in place in these items. However, again, the final report did mention in this next bullet, 5.7, that the city might want to incorporate a leave buyback program in future years to align with common practices among other public sector organizations. Yes, sir?
Can you break that down a little bit for me? Can you break that down so far as what that, what do you mean by a leave buyback program?
So...
Because we don't, we don't, I don't foresee a structure where we're encouraging employees to sellback leave, because sometimes you just need to get away from this place.
Correct. Now, now, our platform officially is, we always encourage employees to utilize their leave. We want them to go and use that. It's a benefit for them to get renewed, refreshed, and come back ready to go 100%. We do have instances, and we have been tracking this over the last year, where we have employees, at one point where a quarter of our staff just was not able to, whether that was due to staffing issues, vacancies in their own departments, or projects that they were trying to ensure that they got done, but they were hitting some of their max accruals. Now, we have been able to encourage more time off and have our employees actually utilize that, so that has come down. But this is just a benefit option for those rare instances where an employee isn't able to due to, you know, projects that are going on, or their own personal reasons. This is also a nice little incentive. And when I worked in the healthcare industry, we had a lot of employees that liked to cash in a little bit of this as a nice holiday thing, that they could use some of that. So they traded off what they wanted to use that for. But again, this is definitely not encouraging employees not to go on vacation. There would be limits to ensure that employees had some protections, to maintain minimum balances in there in the event that something happened, that they needed to utilize these items. And then again, putting parameters or max limits on how much they could actually cash out at one time in order to be fiscally responsible as well. So there are lots of things to consider in this one, but overall, it's just something nice for an employee to be able to utilize as part of the accruals that they, that they earn throughout the year. Great. Let's see. Got to find my place and where I was in my script here. So while we are recommending 5.7, and that is supported by staff for consideration, this leave buyback program, this would definitely be an item that would need to be brought back to city council at a future budget cycle, just to allow staff time to incorporate this, again, responsibly, make sure that we're developing the policy behind that for use. So this one is not currently programmed for any recommended action at this time, but if council does so consider, this is something that staff would support and like to bring back to you at a future date. Any questions on this section of the recommendations?
Good.
Okay. So again, in this item, we are looking for a recommendation. Obviously, the big ones are the paid parental leave and the tuition reimbursement program. Seeking guidance on that from you, if this is something that you would like us to bring in development as a policy at one of the upcoming council meetings.
I have a question, and maybe it's for our consultant, going back to the presentation, but I noticed in, you know, in several of the items, we were, some items we were a little behind, some items were a little ahead. Overall, if you could take and stack rank, if you took our entire compensation structure with our benefits that we have in place today, how would that, how would we score? Would we score at the market, below the market, above the market in total? And I know it's somewhat of a subjective question, right? Because each, each one is different, like some things were ahead, some things were behind, but how do we score overall?
You're competitive in the market, absolutely. You know, especially when you look at the value of your health insurance, I mean, what that does for your employees. I think that you are more competitive than many of your peers in that area. If you look at total benefits altogether, again, it's like I said earlier, it's a mixed position.
Right.
You are, you're absolutely more competitive in certain areas. The ones that you're more behind are, are some of the other things we've really seen come up within the last 10, 15 years even more so. It's the tuition, it's the parental leave. Those are the ones that employees across the board, whether in Texas or in other states that we work, that we're seeing those things being requested, expected even, and being offered much more.
How many companies now or organizations that you look at, as you said, it's come on in 10 or 15 years, have paid parental leave as part of their programs now? Is it 50% or 75%?
More than, yeah, well, more than half.
And are they consistently, consistently, we look at two weeks, four weeks, six weeks?
It does vary. It does, absolutely, it varies. A lot of what we see for the extra paid parental leave, I'm thinking of some of the last studies we've done here recently, looked at some total comp, many of them sat around the four to six-week mark for the extra leave on top of that.
And how big do you think that is as a consideration item for somebody that's seeking employment?
It depends. It depends greatly. It depends greatly on your demographics, on your market, who you're hiring. We see it a lot in schools. Obviously, there's a lot of, you know, young teachers that start teaching, and they look for something like that. So it really does depend on the market that you're hiring from, and then your employee base.
And when we look at this, it's not just the mother. This is for the mother, right, both parents.
Right.
Do we have the parental leave?
No, so currently, we don't have any type of paid parental, whether that's maternity or paternal, leave at the moment, but we do have FMLA in accordance with the laws and regulations. So we do currently offer that, and this would definitely be enhancement, not only for biological parents, but this also would incorporate the eligibility items under FMLA, so stepparents, fostering, placement of adoption, things like that.
Just to clarify, FMLA, there's no paid leave in that, right? It just protects their job, basically.
That is correct. It is an unpaid, job-protected federal leave status.
I would be in favor of the parental leave, but I think I would probably hold off on the tuition reimbursement and the leave buyback and all the other stuff. That's where I am personally. Y'all are asking.
How many of our actual peers have paid parental leave and tuition reimbursement?
So I believe that there is a chart in the final report that actually shows out of our benchmarked peers, and I don't know which page that is on exactly right at the moment, but it does show the percentage out of the respondents. And I want to say, but please don't hold me to this, it was around, like, between, yeah...
I can send that to you.
Yeah.
I can give you the percentage breakdown of what we found.
Let's see, I might be able to find it fast for you, because I've read this thing so many times. Let's see, so if we look at paid parental leave, so on page 140 of your Agenda Packet, it's going to be Exhibit 5.1. So parental leave beyond the mandated FMLA, we're looking at 40% of our targets, our peer targets have that.
And tuition reimbursement?
Same, single parent, and then that was the third parent, so it applied to those.
Yeah.
That's why there's a difference.
Yeah, so they have it broken down where they show the parental leave, which encompasses everybody. That's the 40%, and then they also have it broken out where 30...
Single parent.
Yeah, the single parent, 30% is at the maternity, above and beyond FMLA, and additionally, about the same, 30% offering paternal.
So that means the majority of our peers do not have it?
Right, so about 60%, 60% of them don't, out of the ones that responded. So I think if you saw about 17 out of the 20 peers responded to the benefit survey itself.
And then what about tuition reimbursement? Is there a chart for that?
Yes, there is.
Page 143?
Yes.
60%.
60%.
Yeah.
I would think more people would offer paid parental leave than tuition reimbursement.
Well, in essence, that's why we are here, talking about this now, is we identified problems with recruitment and keeping talent once we have recruited them. So we're looking at this study, and these are the recommendations that say, hey, you know, these are some things that you might, that might be answers to the problem you paid us to fix or to help solve, right?
Excuse me, I can't hear you.
Use your...
I'm on mute. We have a really competitive benefits package. So I don't, I don't know that we need all of these things, but I, I don't, I don't know. I just feel like, speaking as the only woman on this council, and having had children myself, I mean, I feel like it should be pretty standard everywhere, that you should at least have parental leave, right? You know, I couldn't go back to work the week after giving birth to a child, so I didn't have a choice. I just, I would be very much in favor of the paid parental leave, but because we have such a competitive benefits package, I think maybe hanging tight on the other stuff for now, because we do compete very well in that area.
How much was it estimated to cost if we were to institute the tuition reimbursement? And say we had two people per year max out what they could draw off of it, what would that cost us per year?
Yeah, so we've done some preliminary discussions internally on what that might look like, should council's decision be to move forward with that. And we're kind of following, along with Evergreen's recommendations, where we're looking to reimburse up to $2,500 per semester with a max cap of about $5,000.
So 10 grand a year to the cost to the city. Would it, would it be fair to say that there might be two people a year that would claim that?
So it would be max of $5,000 for the entire year to the city, but yes, if you had multiple, it would be $5,000 per employee that were doing it. But we don't estimate that there would be more than maybe one or two a year, just due to our size. And we would put parameters around it where it would need to be departmentally and organizationally viable, so we're not just going to pay for tuition reimbursement for you to go get any, anything you want. It would need to be related to your position and add valued.
So do, could we, could we wrap it in some kind of contract where we said, you know, you're an engineer, or you want to go for an engineering degree, you got to, you got to give us the next three years if we're going to help you?
Absolutely. And we would propose that as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, we would propose some type of reimbursement or qualifying term length that you would be required to stay with the city, should you participate in the reimbursement program.
Yeah, and about 10 grand a year is what you think could, the max it could cost?
I do, and obviously, that's an estimation. I don't have a crystal ball, I can't tell the future, but, but based on our workforce, I think that's a safe estimation.
Okay, thank you.
Thought on that is maybe we could poll employees and see how many would take advantage of it before we go down that road. You know, and see what the, what the demand is.
Well, I think you'd also have to poll potential employees to get accurate data that we would be able to use as a crystal ball, right? I mean, we're trying to shop for people.
We don't know who the potential employees are.
That's exactly what I'm saying. That's exactly what I'm saying.
I'm talking about current employees.
Yeah. We have, we have open positions right now that we need to fill, right? We're trying to show that there's lots of hay in our barn over here, so come on and eat, you know?
I understand. I think we've got enough people here to get an idea. I'm just talking about an idea to get... Do you want to go back to parental leave real quick? What, besides maternity leave for mothers and fathers, what else falls under parental, paid parental leave? If children are sick or something, you have to take a day off, or is it just mainly for maternity benefits?
It is for maternity benefits, yes. Yeah, anything else under those qualifying life events that would be related to a serious medical condition would solely fall under FMLA at that point. So those, while paid parental leave programs, we would recommend that it run concurrently with FMLA. They don't necessarily have to run exclusively together, and in those instances, they would be separated.
Okay.
This is kind of just off-topic, but I've always run male-dominated industry companies, right? So I've never paid any of this, you know, parental leave, but I'm understanding now that we, we might need this to be competitive, to go over the top, you know, and I'm listening to the information that we paid for, and I appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
But we're not seeing that, based upon our, on our pretty strong positioning with our benefits, the way they are now. So, just, just want to consider that, right?
Why'd we pay for the study?
Trying to keep up with Joneses, I guess. I don't have an answer for that, but it's something that we want to do to make sure that we stay competitive. But I think it's a, I think there are good recommendations. I believe in tuition reimbursement. I believe in paid parental leave, based upon what Emily was talking about. Yeah, there's, you can't just get up and go back to work. But we need to tailor it, of course, to what's going to benefit us financially as well.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. I agree.
Mentioned that the benchmark cities, 40% of them, only 40% offered paid parental leave right now. But is the tendency for cities to, my belief is that more and more are seeing this, just like we're seeing it tonight, and they're starting to add this to their benefits package. So whether, it may be at 40% now, but we'd anticipate, you know, another two or three years, it'll probably be 60%.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, we're seeing that trend increase across the, we're seeing that trend increase as far as that being an offering at municipalities, cities, counties, K-12.
Okay.
Across multiple states.
I think that's a more important benefit than tuition reimbursement, personally.
What's the estimated cost on that to the city?
That's going to depend on the employee.
You guys have talked about numbers for the education. Have you talked about numbers for the parental leave at all?
It's going to depend on who takes the leave.
Requires certain factors to be in place before...
Right. So, again, while I cannot predict the future, I can tell you, in the last year, we've had between four and six employees that have had a qualifying life event, that something like this would have greatly benefited them, several in our police department, some throughout the rest of the organization. But that's about the best I can estimate. And then, of course, their salaries are different, so their accrual payouts would be at different rates.
If you just had to ballpark it, what would it have cost us last year? Just a number that I won't ever, I'll forget it, I promise I'll forget it.
If...
I mean, is that something you could look into?
Yeah, I know, I was like, um...
Yeah, if it won't take just a second to figure it out, let's figure it out.
So if we, and it would depend on several factors. It would depend on how many weeks of paid leave City Council was desiring us to put into place. If we went with a minimum recommendation of four to six weeks at the low end for an employee... If we're, if they're making, you know, let's say $25 an hour, we're looking at maybe $4,000 for that particular employee to be able to spend quality time at home.
$4,000 for that, that...
Maybe, and that's me doing them, and I don't do math in my head, sir.
And then let's say we got six of those, so $24,000?
Scott.
I think it'd be $5,000 to $6,000 a month on average for an employee for a month. You know, again, we have a wide spread of ranges, but just, if you take the composite employee, I think it'd be somewhere in there, four, for a month's worth. And keep in mind, that's a, that's an opportunity cost, so that, so we're already budgeting the salary for individuals. What you're losing is the productivity of the employee for the, for the...
Absolutely.
Presumably, four, four weeks that they're not on the job.
I mean, to me, this, this stuff kind of sounds cheap if it's for recruitment and retention, right? If I'm looking for a job and it's, man, you know, I'm 26, I'm not done having kids yet, you know? Where do I want to work? I want to work with somebody that's going to take care of me. And it wouldn't be for me 10 years ago, because, you know, I would, I wasn't in that camp, but I didn't have to do that to be competitive either, you know, because none of my peers were doing it. And if more and more of our peers are doing it now, then I understand the need to at least open the discussion and be open-minded towards it.
Maybe we should just, you know, is a suggestion, look at like a six-week, you know, because that's, I think Emily made a good point about when there are births, daycares don't take children at four weeks, right? There's a little bit of time there, so maybe we start there and see what that looks like for...
Drop my daughter off at four weeks.
Most, most daycares will not take a new baby until they're six weeks old.
I mean, four to six, but I think we should, we should, my suggestion is to take a look at it, for sure.
So I think where we're heading is that everybody's kind of considering this one. I think that what you're looking for is, do you want to bring this back as a resolution to council for consideration?
Correct, along with a draft policy for, for your preview.
Right, and so I think with that, I think what we're asking is, we have some questions that are kind of unanswered. I think there's consideration here to go with this, you know, four to six weeks, maybe, not understanding that, but I think the question was asked, what would have been, what would have been the impact last year on the city if it had been four weeks or if it had been six weeks? Could we get that as part of the, when you bring it back?
Let me ask a question, on to your question. So, Scott, when we have lost productivity, do we ever hire contractors to fill in, or do we just absorb it internally typically?
Almost always absorb it. Typically, just through, other people take the work, or sometimes we just, depending on the position, of course. In some cases, if it's an hourly position, there's overtime costs. Oftentimes, it's just absorbed in the organization, or, or projects are deferred, so it varies.
So the impact to the budget would not be felt, would just, other people would pick up the load while that person's out. So just to try to understand that, that call, it doesn't sound like that would impact our budget, unless we had to hire external resources for the time.
Yeah, from a pure budgetary dollar perspective, I don't think it'd be a significant impact. It would just be, yeah, again, that lost productivity.
Lost productivity is a good thing to know, I agree, so that might be helpful.
The second one that you have up here, same situation, tuition reimbursement, and same, you want to amend the policy and bring that back as a resolution. I kind of like the idea, you know, if we had somebody that was working in public works, and they wanted to go get welder certification, and, and we were to reimburse their, their tuition to get that done, and then they were to bring that back to the city as something, a service that we needed as part of public works. But then, I think you mentioned, we'd have some contract language that, as part of that, they, they would have to serve at the city for an extended amount of time or pay that money back.
Absolutely. We do something like this similarly, if you remember, maybe it was a little over a year ago, when we introduced the police cadet program. So we do it essentially to build in and, and put a cadet through the police academy training program with the intent for them to essentially stay with us and become a full officer at that point. So this would follow a lot of the similar guidelines for reimbursement and commitment to the city once reimbursed. It would just be open to other areas of the organization.
I would be interested in seeing a policy on it related to this. I think there could be a benefit to the city.
I absolutely agree. I think, especially if it, I think only if it's work-related, you know, so no underwater basket weaving.
Absolutely. Agreed.
And I know in the law enforcement circles, most major departments will go ahead and add a monthly stipend, depending upon educational opportunities as well. So I think, I think that it's a, it would be a great benefit for those that want it, and nothing lost for those who have already reached where they want to be, kind of thing. So, why don't we do it, doing it for water treatment before we were doing it for...
We have in the past done it for, I know some guys that are out there at the, at the plant that have actually done it with us, so...
We had picked up the tab for that, yeah.
We do, so typically, what we see... We, we do. So, so typically what we see in our, our utilities department is most of our hires come in entry level with no experience in that utility technician position. And as they work through the department, they meet their time requirements and hour requirements and then they take the testing for their certification. Once they obtain one class C license, whether that's in water or wastewater, at that point, we typically move them up that career ladder into an operator one. If they go back and further their education into receiving a second licensure for the opposite one that they started with, then we, we advance them into an operator two level position. But theirs is reimbursed as part of their training and development program through the department. So we do pay for them to go to the class, their, their books, the, the cost of the actual test itself.
And, and again, we're paying for quality in-house.
Exactly.
And I think tuition reimbursement is kind of a no-brainer. It's not too expensive.
In, in some of our areas, it is difficult to hire people that already have it. So one of our philosophies, how we maintain our recruitment strategy is to build from, from within. And, and we teach and we build from the ground up. And that's, that's one of the things that we're already doing in utilities. Again, we just incorporated that with the police cadet program to build into a full officer to help us with those recruitment goals when we, we may not necessarily be able to, to get them otherwise.
So I, I have a comment on this. And I, I can certainly see the benefit of having a tuition reimbursement program and the incentive it would, you know, provide. But this one would impact our budget. And I don't know in times like these if it's necessarily, I don't know what the impact would be yet, how many people would take advantage of this and what the overall cost would potentially be. But to ask our residents to pay to put other people through college, I mean, gen, very broadly speaking, that's what we're doing. Is it, is, is that okay? Is that the right thing to do? I know with the police cadet program, we are getting a pre-commitment from them, right? So they're committing to work for our city. Are we building these folks up from within only for them to go work somewhere else? I think there needs to be some sort of, if we're going to do a program like this, I think there needs to be some sort of commitment from them to the city so we can then reap the benefits from that incentive that we're providing to them. I don't think we should just offer a tuition reimbursement program so they can go and get their degree and then off they go somewhere else.
I, I agree. And I think we, we talked about that, maybe a three-year commitment or whatever it is. And, and, and a certain grade, you know, hey, we're not paying somebody to go to get Ds, kind of thing. But I think that it's an, it's an opportunity to go ahead and grow our workforce. And if, if at the end, you know, when they're, when they're checking out, if they don't meet that commitment, you know, they're going to get less on their money as they're walking out at the door. Are those things, go ahead.
Like, you know, I, it, it's my responsibility to the citizens and I, and I have this problem where I think of this government as a business, right? And it's, it, it trips me up sometimes, but I, I feel it now. I feel a responsibility to try to build the best business for the money that we have available. And I feel like that's my responsibility to the residents. And it, it's not necessarily about, you know, would every taxpayer want this money spent this way? It's do they want the, the best finished product that we as a council can make when it, when it comes to how we do our day-to-day stuff and who we hire and how we recruit? And I'm, it's probably wrong, right? It's probably a backwards way to look at it.
You're on track. So for these two issues, and are these the two that you need feedback on tonight?
Yes.
Okay. So have we provided you enough feedback to come forward with?
I believe so. What, what I heard was that I will bring these back in a policy for you to review and, and to have a discussion on for possible adoption and consideration.
And if we, we provide enough guidelines for you, for the development of what you're looking for as part of that policy?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I, I would ask, is there going to be a cap? So when you, when you bring it back, you mentioned that you've already talked about some numbers that you would cap the tuition at. Would you cap it at two available spots per year or?
We could if, if that's what council would like us to look at. It wasn't something that I had considered before when looking at it from an operational perspective. We, again, we didn't estimate that there would be many in any given year. But if you would like us to incorporate a max amount of people that we would put through a program in a year's time, we, we could definitely incorporate that.
It might help just for cost fixing on this, on this one thing, right?
Yeah, at least initially while we're going through the, the initial phases.
Or maybe a percent, like a, I don't know, for this level of a worker, you could get up to five hundred dollars. For this level of worker, you get up to a thousand or two, you know, I don't, I don't know what the right answer is. I know obviously, you know, going to law school is really expensive. And so I don't, I would never expect the city to be like, hey, we're going to put this person through law school. So.
And, and fortunately, we don't have a city attorney on staff, so we would not, that would not be valuable for the department or the organization. So we would have some limits for that.
I'm, I'm just using that as an example, right? So there's different, there's different types of programs depending on what position you serve within the city. And so maybe having a certain cap per whatever level employee it is. That way you know going in to that position, okay, I have the opportunity to get five hundred dollars of my tuition paid every semester or whatever. Just a thought.
Funds are available.
Just a thought.
The account?
That gives me a good place to start. Okay.
Got everything you need?
I think so. Are there any other questions in this section before I move on to the next one?
Oh, you have more?
Oh, I have more.
That's what I was asking if you got everything you needed.
So sorry.
All right, let's go.
All right. So, so the next section was regarding our classifications. Now, overall, Evergreen did find that most of the city's classifications were pretty accurate and they were up to date and appropriately aligned with the market. However, as you saw earlier, they did identify a few areas for improvement just to ensure that we remained consistent with our benchmark peers and maintaining that internal equity. So the recommendations included in six point one regarding reclassification of positions to align titles with market standards. It can be found on exhibit C of the final report, which is on one pa, on page one forty-eight. Those were the recommendations that council did adopt September eighteenth of 2025 along with the pay schedule. And so those have already been made operational. Now, recommendation six point two addresses the creation or addition of those additional levels for positions that have the limited progression opportunities. These recommendations could support the development of career ladders within those departments such as finance or enhanced for public works areas, municipal court, where we do have some of those single-level classifications that currently restrict advancement. And this could create a valuable retention tool for those high turnover or those hard-to-fill positions. It is important to note that Evergreen did provide some recommendations for us to look at for those possible career ladder opportunities in exhibit D that's on page one forty-nine of the final report and N-one-fifty-two, I think, as well. Now, while we do support recommendations for the addition of career ladders, we do recognize that there might be a need to vet these a little more thoroughly before bringing back final items for your consideration at a future budget cycle. So while we would like to gain support or not to move forward with looking at that in the future, we're not necessarily recommending that you adopt what was presented tonight. So, so, so really that's just, do we move forward with looking into that further? Or is this kind of a non-starter that, that we just don't move forward with going forward? Now, recommendation six point three, it generally just involves updating the job descriptions just as a component of the overall changes that we've gone through and made as part of this compensation study. And this is just to ensure that we're compliant, we're just staying accurate and we're just alignment with the new structure and titles and the pay grade numbers that we've gotten so far. This is a deliverable that was already scoped as part of the original process and we hope to see these completed and updated by the end of the calendar year, give or take a month or so, depending on timing, especially with the holiday season. These reviews and the approval of these final recommendations would just be an operational item that would get approved through the city manager and, and just adopted internally for internal use. So together, these classification recommendations, they really kind of just help shape and frame that, that equitable internal long-term workforce planning that, that we've already kind of put into place. So again, on this one, that, all, all the guidance I'm looking for is if you would like staff to at a future budget cycle, consider addition or maybe a future workshop for adding career levels in other areas of our organization.
Yes.
Don't we kind of do that already when we do our budget and we look at staffing? Don't we kind of make that as part of our budget?
During, during the budget process, if we have a new or amended job classification, we bring that to during the budget and we have you adopt that at the, as part of the adopted budget at the end of the cycle each year, yes.
That's, I guess that's consistent with what we've been doing by historically, right? Or are we talking about something?
I think, I think the process is, is consistent. The, the distinction here is it'd be a potential to provide additional job classification levels that wouldn't necessarily be immediately filled. You know, they'd be for future growth, progression, career ladder type of thing. So it'd be a slight distinction there, but we would follow the same process that, that you described.
If we're, if we're considering this tuition thing, like, and we're going to be really big on trying to have this employee retention, it makes sense in my mind because you want to offer potential employees a path to, for growth. So if they can only come in as a building inspector one and never be anything different, they might not stay as long. So I, I like it.
Great. Any other questions before I move on to the next section? Perfect. So moving on to the compensation sections, you're going to love this one. All recommendations in this category have already been adopted by city council. So no actions, no further actions are needed in this area. This just encompasses the adoption of the thirty-step plan, the one and a half percent progression between those steps, the methodology for the bring to minimum plus one, adjusting those range spreads. And, and, and again, these have already all been adopted. So this is just an overview page for you. Now, recommendations regarding the performance evaluations, these can be found kind of towards the bottom of page one seventy-two of the packet. Recommendations six point nine, ten, and eleven are just aligning our evaluation process with that new step plan that we've already adopted. So this is just going to include streamlining the current forms to match that progression. So updating some, some technical things on the forms. And then expanding opportunities for employee development through the addition of mid-year check-ins. That'll just be something we do operationally as well. So there's no action needed on that one. But one thing to note that you'll see in the, in the study and on exhibit A was the recommendation for six point one-three, which is not on here. That was the three sixty performance evaluations. We, staff did not recommend moving forward with that one at this time mainly due to the challenges associated and the size of our organization. It just doesn't seem something feasible, but it is something that we will continue to evaluate every year annually, just as possible considerations if we do get to that point. And vetting out is there, are there other opportunities for how we can incorporate something similar in future years? Now, other than that, staff does plan to, again, make these operational within the next twelve to eighteen months so that we can begin incorporating these new processes into our performance evaluation system. And we will also begin to plan on how to integrate technology systems in order to support, to support our performance management process. But these will come as part of the budget process in future present, so I could yell, budget cycle years. So there's no action needed on that eyes and tonight either. Now, finally, this last section that I'm going to walk city council through are the recommendations that staff would recommend that city council adopt by policy under the system administration section of the final report. This section focuses on maintaining that long-term integrity of this new classification system and plan that we've put into place. These items can generally be found starting on page one seventy-seven. Recommendations six point one-four and one point five reinforce the city's ongoing process for maintaining that market alignment. Staff will continue to conduct targeted market surveys for those hard-to-fill positions in the fiscal year twenty-six and twenty-seven as recommended by the study. But we would like to go one step further and develop just administratively some measurable triggers for what would trigger us to do a targeted study for those hard-to-fill positions. Outside of that, this is also recommending that staff develop a formal policy for adopting the continuation and conduction of the compensation study every three to five years as recommended. We have done that to date, but we would also like to formalize it in policy as well with the next full review, similar to what we did this time in the fiscal year twenty-eight or twenty-nine if, if this all goes through. Now, recommendations six point one-six, one-seven, and one-eight that are highlighted here focus on updating the city's personnel policies and administrative directives to formalize that ongoing management of the classification and compensation system to include those clear administrative guidelines for salary placements, promotions, demotions, transfers, even adoption of that, that cost of living adjustment thresholds and within those approved parameters and just confirming the city manager's authority to administer these processes within those adopted frameworks. In order to formally adopt the recommendations to maintain and sustain the city's current placement in the market, staff will bring these items back for formal consideration and adoption by preparing updated policies for city council along with directives to review during the December twenty-six or again, January twenty, December twenty-five, January twenty-six meeting cycle. So these updates, again, generally they would incorporate the Evergreens recommendations regarding the COLA methodology, which just as a highlight is using CPI as the primary indicator and only utilizing the ECI as a secondary measure along with defining thresholds and governance measures just to ensure fairness, transparency, and that fiscal accountability that we want to make sure that we maintain in how annual adjustments and personnel actions are operationally administered. So together, these recommendations do provide that structure to maintain and sustain the items that we put into place. It will allow consistency throughout the plan in these future years, transparency, not only for council, but staff and anybody else who wants to take a look at these. And then just accountability for how the city manages the system over time until we get to the next reevaluation of this program. And I'll pause here if you have any questions on these.
I have a comment, especially on the last, the COLA. I think the, I think the council sets, well, the council is supposed to set policy for the city. I think administering these compensation is responsibility of our city manager. I, I don't want the council to be the ones that decides what COLA is and what merits are. Our job is to approve funding for compensation of it, but the, but you, Scott, manage that. So I'm not sure that last one makes sense to me at the moment, but maybe as y'all work through it, it's, because I don't, I don't think we're the ones should make that decision. But we look at the budget, we look at the impact of the taxpayers, we look at maintaining good quality staff. So we have to figure out how much money we can, can allocate to that part of the budget. So I prefer to stay at that level and then as you administer according to the new plan and the new things we've just approved, kind of. And then as you administer according to the new plan and the new things we've just approved, kind of do that. So just to clarify that 617, as it's written, not, not quite.
And I think, Councilman, that's exactly what this would do.
I hope so.
This would, this would, this is simply, simply outlined by policy, the, the thresholds by which I either incorporate the budget and report it to you. Or if it's particularly high, outline measures to, to alleviate that. And from there, it's administrative decision. But what this would do is, is give the, the framework within those thresholds by which I would administer the budget and report it, and that's it. So I, I think, I think this gets to exactly what you want to accomplish.
That's, that's been my concern in the past, so I think, just wanted to register that to be sure that we don't get into the, us making that decision as a council. Because that shouldn't be our decision.
This would, it would, we'd, we'd report it and put it in the budget, that's the goal.
Prove it, you spend it.
So 6.14, I'm curious about and could be good. I did ask a question the first time I heard about it is, you know, how do we define hard-to-fill positions? Which you did mention, we're still trying to figure that out, right? We don't know exactly how long it needs to stay vacant before a trigger happens. But I'm also curious what a target mark, a targeted market survey would be. Could we do one in-house or are we going to have to go pay somebody to pick this ball up and?
So for this, I, I do have some ideas on what we could use as measurable targets, like our, our vacancy rate, our retention rate. Some things that we're not currently tracking because PD positions tend to skew this number, but time to fill. And that's just because they have to go through a lot more in the vetting process to get hired on than some of our other staff. But there are metrics that we currently are tracking that we can use to say, hey, once we've hit this percentage in this particular department or in this field. That would then trigger a targeted market survey for that position. And then what that would look like is internally, we would utilize the 20 peer organizations and reach out internally for just that position. To see if we, if, if we are in line with the market or if that's one of the issues that is, that is creating the, the challenge points for our retention or recruitment in those areas. So, so that is kind of what it would look like. I, I don't propose for these very specific ones that we hire outside consultants for that. That's definitely something I could do in-house and actually have done several years in the past as well to get that data from our peer cities. But as we do the entire organization, that's when we recommend the full outside study and survey. And then also reevaluation of our, our peer organizations as well, just to ensure that we're still sitting in that right pocket for, for our organization. So individually, year to year, that's something we could handle in-house.
Yeah, I, I just, I would like to see the answers to those, that couple of questions, so.
Absolutely.
I guess up until the time we've done the survey, that's how y'all were handling it in the past, correct? You were doing your own?
It was a combination. I definitely was getting the data for all of our positions based on the benchmark cities that we had at the time. I can tell you, out of the, I think we had 12 previously. Out of those, I, I would get lucky if three or four of our previous benchmarks responded at any given time. So we were limited on the amount of data that we were getting, but we were conducting it to kind of see just where we were in consideration for, you know, cost of living, CPI. If there were any positions that were just grossly out of alignment that we needed to focus on more and bring to council's attention. And, and we would just continue to do that and just, just put some measurable guidelines on those targeted positions instead of globally.
The health?
Okay, great. So closing these final policy, policy recommendations, again, they're just to ensure that we maintain in that market alignment. We stay competitive, equitable, and that we sustain the plan that you have adopted thus far. So based on your council's direction tonight, I feel like I have enough to move forward to bring this back to you at a future meeting. I guess my only other question is, would you like another workshop item to review those policies? Or would you like us to develop and draft these policies and it be a consideration and discussion item?
I, I for one would like another workshop because we're, we're breaking some new ground here.
Sure.
And I, I think that the council needs input based upon what we hear from, from you.
But I would like it to be, I would like for you guys to come with like the suggestions. And then we can, so that way we're not just sitting here for hours from scratch, okay?
Yeah, I, I can definitely come with draft policies, a good place for us to start. And then as you look at key components in there, we can adjust as needed.
I'd recommend that we don't do it all in one night.
Okay.
If we could break it up a little bit, so we, if you need to categorize a couple of them together, that would be fine, but.
Sure.
There's a lot to process here, but when you boil it down, there's, there's, there's likely going to be three policies that we actually bring to you.
Okay.
Wish and reimbursement, parental leave, and the, the system administration. There, there are five components, but it's really one policy, so it's, it's, it's not as bad as you might think.
Yep.
Well, I'm very happy we did the survey because now we know where we stand, we made some adjustments, we, we have a good handle on our staff and, and the market, so I think it was a great job.
All right, are there any other questions tonight?
Just to make sure you got everything you need.
I believe so.
Okay.
All right, thank you, council.
Thank you, Joanna. And then we'll move on to our last workshop item tonight, which is take a look at the speed limits for Post Oak Trail and Silver Spur Trail.
Good evening. I'm sorry, I just noticed Councilmember Sork had stepped out for a minute, so anyway. Good evening, Carol Van Zant, Assistant City Manager. This workshop item this evening is found on page 192 of your agenda packet. It relates to the potential of speed limit adjustments on Silver Spur Trail and Post Oak Trail. My apologies, this short presentation was an afterthought, so I have put copies on your position tonight. It is not in the packet. After the presentation of some background information, I will cede the floor to Councilmember Ruben Alvera for further discussion. First, last month, the city council approved an ordinance reducing the speed limit on Roland Acres from 35 miles per hour to 30 miles per hour. After that approval, Councilmember Alvera requested a future item to discuss potential speed limit adjustments on Post Oak Trail and Silver Spur Trail. Both currently posted at 35 miles per hour. The adjustments would provide speed limit consistency in the area. Without it, the roads may experience increased traffic as drivers seek alternate routes to Ammon Road. As a reference point, we are talking about Silver Spur, which runs between Ralph Fair Road and Wild Oak Hill, which is the bottom green faint, faintly from Ralph Fair Road. The top green is Post Oak Trail that runs from Silver Spur and Roland Acres Trail. A little bit about the speed limit background on both these roads. In June 1989, city council adopted 35 miles per hour on both roads. The prima facie speed at this time was adopted at 30 miles per hour. October 1989, city council adopted 40 miles per hour on Silver Spur Trail from Ralph Fair Road to Intrepid. On this map, Intrepid is a little bit shorter, it's just slightly past Post Oak. June 1995, city council adopted 35 miles per hour on Silver Spur Trail and reaffirmed 35 miles per hour on Post Oak Trail. After a review, an extensive review by staff in 2009 of all the speed limits in the city. City council readopted 35 miles per hour on Silver Spur Trail and on Post Oak Trail. The city's transportation map, which is found in the comprehensive plan, designates Silver Spur Trail as a connector street, which is a street having minor circulation within neighborhoods. Collecting traffic from larger areas or from multiple local streets. Post Oak Trail is designated as a local rural residential street, which is a street that serves lower density or estate neighborhoods. Between October 1st, 2024, and September 30th of this year, in accordance with the Fair Oaks Ranch Police Report. Silver Spur had five reported citations or warnings, while Post Oak Trail had 51. According to the text dot driver crash report from July 25th, 2016 through October 3rd, 2025. Silver Spur Trail had seven reported accidents. Three involved mailboxes, one another fixed object, one a tree and a shrub, and two involved driver inattention. Post Oak Trail, with the 51 citations, had one accident involving a fence. So as I noted, I will be ceding the floor to Councilmember Alvera. After your discussion tonight, listed here are some options that are available to you if you desire to move forward. One is just remain status quo, leave the speed limit at 35 miles per hour. You could submit the item to the Transportation Safety Advisory Committee for review. Authorize traffic studies at set intervals, potentially now, maybe in six months, a year. Direct staff to prepare an ordinance to reduce one or both streets, speed limits, anything other that you may think of. I can answer any questions before I cede the floor, but I'll be happy to answer any other questions while you're discussing.
I have one question. So are these the last two streets that are at 35 that are not Deets or the Parkway?
Correct, and during your discussion, I believe Christina has a map that we are going to put up so it, it's more visual for you. That you can see if these go to 30 miles per hour, you're correct, it would be, one side of Deets would be the 35 and the lower half of Fair Oaks Parkway.
So, so my, my, my vision of this is, that's, you know. If everybody knows that it's 30 miles in the city, if you're not on Deets or you're not on the Parkway, that's a lot easier for people to remember.
Especially in the north 40, yes.
And it's, yes, it's difficult, I'm there. Anyway, Ruben.
Thank you.
Is that 194 of the packet? That is, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so we, we couldn't really talk about this when we were talking about Roland Acres, I wanted to bring this back. Just because when that map, when you zoom out and show the whole city, once we changed Roland Acres, then Silver Spur and, and Post Oak really stood out to me. It's just being completely inconsistent with the rest of the city and particularly the, the whole back 40. And so I'm not saying it has to be changed, I don't know if it does need to be changed, but just based on the map, it didn't make a whole lot of sense to me, which I thought warranted further discussion and us looking into it. And the, the fact that 50, I was surprised at the 51 citations. So obviously, one, it, there appears to be a speeding problem on Post Oak. And two, it's, it's early, already heavily monitored and enforced. And so that is what stuck out to me when we were talking about Roland Acres, and I thought it, it warranted further discussion.
The last study that was done, or the, not the last study, the last change that was done was in 2009.
2009, the city did a complete, all-encompassing speed study of all the streets and re-adopted.
So since 2009, there have been, there's been a lot of growth, a lot more houses, especially on Silver Spur. I owned property out on Silver Spur. And, so I, I mean, I definitely think there's a, there's a need because there's going, there's a lot more traffic. You're seeing a lot more golf carts, too. You've got 51 citations on Post Oak, you've got seven accidents on Silver Spur. And none of it, you know, none of it makes sense when everything else is a lower speed limit. So I think with all of those things combined, it's almost a no-brainer to me.
I think it would be fun to send this back to TSAC. And then let's come up with a bunch of other stuff to send them to while we're at it.
So as one consideration, it is to send it back to TSAC.
I'm here for that, honestly. I'd let them figure it out, that's what they do, and at least see their recommendation on it.
For me, it's, 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 I, I don't know if we want to not waste, but spend a lot of people's times and, and resources in studies and, and this and that. But to me, it's more of like common sense.
Sure.
When you just look at the map. And so, and I don't know if, if, when we had the Roland Acres discussion, you know, I don't even know if any residents on Silver Spur or Post Oak have ever, has anyone ever brought anything up of that being a, a speed issue?
No.
Yeah.
And so if we do send it back to TSAC, I would recommend, or I would like some guidance, I want to have success with TSAC as well as with you all. What would you want TSAC to do? What, what are we asking them to do?
If I understand, so I'm, I'm new to this traffic stuff, right? But if I understand it right, the recommendation, whenever you have excessive speeding and no citations, virtually, is to raise the speed limit. Is that wrong? Am I wrong in that?
No, you're not.
Okay, I, I, I think it's to go the other way. And that's like our only drag strip in Fair Oaks, man. Like, it's the straightest, flattest.
Still a neighborhood, though.
It is, yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not equipped to figure that one out. It does make sense, sure, if we, if we keep it all 30 miles an hour, but.
Well, and I, and I think, I think that really from my standpoint, living back there, 30 miles an hour, knowing how, what the speed is. And, and once, you know, now that we've changed Roland Acres. I think that people have a tendency to go ahead and go the speed limit for the most part. And there's no more questions, is it 35 here, there's no, is it 35? It's 30 miles an hour. This is not, we're only talking about a five-mile difference, you know, we're not talking, you know, bumping it to 60 or dropping it to 20, you know? I think that, but I do see for the ease of the residents and the people who live there, you know, let's just, let's just drop those two and, you know, just keep it all at 30 unless you're on, you know, the two real main collectors that we have in the, in the city. That would be, that would be my idea. I don't, I don't need to see another traffic study, I don't want it to, to have to go through that. If it goes to TSAC, we're going to, staff is going to be burdened by some, some question, one thing or the other. I think this is kind of probably the, the, requires the least amount of brain bites of things that I've seen come across now.
I, I concur with that, Scott. And I, I think in 2009, wasn't the Parkway 45 miles an hour?
It was.
That was pre-golf carts, so I believe you are correct, but not positive, but I believe.
And now it's what, 35? Because of the traffic.
The north part of the Parkway, the south from Deets.
Right, we're, we're, we're going for some model here.
Coda is in Austin, Jonathan.
Everybody knows everything that's going on, right?
The, are you through? Did I cut you off? I'm sorry. Did you really have more? So I think what Ruben brought up and kind of the issue that Scott kind of complimented on is, the area up there, the majority of the streets are at 30 miles an hour, they are intertwined. Do we want to take a look at this and make all the streets 30 miles an hour? So if you're driving in the north 40, if you're north of Deets Elkhorn Road, well, really north of Keeneland, everything north of Keeneland is 30 miles an hour. I think really that becomes the decision, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so with that, I don't think that, my belief is, I don't think we need to send this back to TSAC to make that decision.
Agreed.
I mean, I'm, I'll open it up. I, I believe that if it did go back to TSAC, what it would entail is a lot of surveys and.
Do those cost us anything, just curious, new signings?
Well, it costs us staff to stay out to go through all.
When they do the surveys themselves?
Well, I mean, it's their focus time, that takes them away from something else that they could be concentrated on. But does it contribute, you know, if this is really the focus of what we're looking at? making everything consistent, what does this contribute to that? If that's really the decision that we're looking at, does doing surveys and traffic counts and, I mean, is that really going to make a difference?
I don't think it has in the past, really.
Thanks for that addition, I appreciate that. But based on that, that's why I would say, I, I wouldn't recommend sending it back to, to the TSAC.
Yeah, if the logic is to, to keep it simple for all of Fair Oaks, I, I can understand that.
So really, I mean, and then I think, what was the other? You know, you can do a survey for council, is that?
Oh, you mean a traffic study?
Traffic studies and central for council. Again, I, I don't see a need for that. And so really, to me, what it comes down to is. Right. And, well, and so I'd say based, based on that, my recommendation, yes, bring a, an ordinance change back to council and let's consider it. I think it really boils down to a preference of, do we want to keep all the streets consistent?
Correct, and I think that's what we'll base it on. So if I'm hearing correctly, go ahead in both streets in the ordinance.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we can easily do that.
And then, I think that, to me, what that does is, you know, we'll have consideration in the ordinance, and really, it's, it's the determination, do we remain status quo or do we adopt a new ordinance for it? Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me, yes.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that, or?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you. Councilmember Alvera, you're good?
Good.
Good, thank you.
All right, that completes the workshop items that we had tonight. And we have one report, which is our financial, is it year-end, and investment report.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council, Summer Fleming, Director of Finance. So I am pleased to present the preliminary year-end results for the fiscal year ended September thirtieth, followed by the quarterly investment report. My presentation begins on page two hundred and thirty-seven of your agenda packet, if you wanted to follow along. So the audit is currently ongoing, so there may be some adjusting entries as we wrap up, but I don't anticipate any substantial changes from what is presented tonight. The only exception will be the implementation of a new pronouncement issued by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and that will affect the utility fund. So I'll explain that in more detail later in the presentation. But this report provides a snapshot of how the city performed financially compared to the budget, as well as an update on investment activity through the last quarter of the fiscal year. So the general fund revenues finished the fiscal year strong at about eleven point three-six million dollars, exceeding budget by just over three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Now, property tax, sales tax, and investment earnings were the primary contributors to that positive variance, reflecting solid economic activity. One area that declined this year was court fines and fees, which came in about eighty-five thousand dollars below budget. That drop is primarily due to fewer citations being issued, but this decrease was offset by stronger performance in the other categories. And just a quick note on how these tables are formatted throughout the presentation, when you see a positive variance, that indicates actual revenues or expenditures were better than budget, so a positive number reflects a favorable result. But looking at some of the revenues in detail, our property tax levy totaled seven point six million dollars, and the city collected ninety-nine point five percent of the two thousand twenty-four levy. That was a hundred and two percent of the adopted budget. So it resulted in a surplus of over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and that includes collections from delinquent taxes, penalties, and interest. Sales tax revenue reached one point nine million dollars, which is almost ninety-four thousand dollars or five point two percent higher than last year. So this continues the steady growth trend that we've seen the last couple of years. Sales tax is collected two months in arrears, and we just received the September collections this morning. They came in eleven thousand dollars higher than the accrued estimate reflected in this report. So once those receipts are recorded, that final figure will be updated to reflect the actual amount. New residential growth slowed this year. The city issued forty-six new residential home permits compared to ninety-four last year. Even with the decline in the new home construction permits, total permit revenues, which include commercial projects, additions, remodels, and other permit types, that exceeded budget by about thirty-five thousand dollars. So we continue to see reinvestment in the community through renovation and improvement activity. On the expenditure side, the general fund ended the year well below budget. We're projecting total spending of about ten and a half million dollars, including encumbrances, producing total budget savings of roughly seven hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Now, most of that comes from personnel savings due to vacancies, along with underspending on software maintenance, contractual services, trainings, meetings, and then we had some savings in the annual street maintenance program. So as a result, the general fund is projected to add approximately nine hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars to fund balance, bringing the total to eight point six-three million dollars. Now, encumbrances of about a hundred and thirty-three thousand will remain reserved for those open contracts and purchase orders. But the fund balance also includes a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars for prepaid expenses, thirty-eight thousand dollars for court security and court technology, seventy-seven thousand dollars is restricted for public safety, a hundred and fifty-five thousand is in the tree mitigation fund, four point eight million dollars in the operating reserve, and then three point two million is unallocated and available for any purpose. Now, these are sub-funds within the general fund. We also have additional restricted court revenues that were moved into separate standalone funds, and so I'll cover those balances on another slide. Are there any questions on the general fund results before I move on?
Uh, Summer, I have a couple of questions. On the professional services, positive variance, was most of that software maintenance that we caused the reduction?
A, a large amount of it was. Some of the other professional services, I believe we had savings in court professional services, possibly engineering, I think, for the general, what's the GEC? Yes, for the GEC. So it was a combination, but a lot of it was software maintenance.
Okay. Yeah, I do have one other, I have a request on the tree mitigation. I know we got, in the tree mitigation fund, we allocate from this fund for the oak wilt fund. I think that's a component of the tree mitigation fund, right?
Yes.
So I would like to request that when the oak wilt mitigation portion gets down to five thousand dollars, that you come back to the committee, the councils, and let us know that so we can possibly allocate more money into that. Because I really believe, when I saw last year, we had people that applied for it and couldn't get reimbursements, and we have this money in this tree mitigation fund, and we can move it over into oak wilt. So if y'all could, when it, oak wilt gets to five thousand dollars, so if you bring it to council and say we're at this point, or if we have a run and have a lot of people needing or applying, we would just, you know, make an amendment. I really want us to focus on this oak wilt remediation. So, just a little bit more proactive management, because last year it ran out halfway through the year, and people were trying to get their stuff done, so. That's a request.
Yes, we will remember that for the budget amendment.
Thank you.
All right, well then, we will move on to the strategic and capital projects fund. That began the year with about two point three million dollars in fund balance and ended at one point zero-nine million after completing or closing out several major projects. Those include the completion of the city hall renovation, Tavoli Way Drainage Project. The Post Oak Trail widening project was officially closed out by Tech Dot, and the city received a thirty-five thousand dollar refund from Tech Dot as part of that closeout. The Vestal Park culvert was completed in-house, providing cost savings to the city. The budgeted fire station number three upgrades were completed, as well as the update to the personnel manual, construction of the Gateway Monument, and the IT master plan is nearing completion. Two projects were canceled during the year, the Community Center and Deets Elcorn Sidewalk Project, and so those funds have been returned to available fund balance for future priorities. So the remaining fund balance of one point zero-nine million dollars includes funding for projects still in process, four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budgeted projects, and then there's still about two hundred and sixty-seven thousand unallocated and would be available for any use. Now, other governmental funds collectively total four point eight million dollars. This includes the bond capital fund, which accounts for geo-bond proceeds and the roadway CIP, the equipment replacement fund, debt service fund, and here are the other court restricted funds mentioned earlier. They are just standalone funds individually now. The full fund financial statements are included in the financial report for your reference. So moving on to the utility fund, total utility revenues came in eight point three million dollars. That exceeded budget by about sixty-seven thousand dollars. Operating revenues were eighty-one thousand above budget, driven by wastewater. Water non-operating revenues were higher due to investment income. While wastewater non-operating revenues came in lower than anticipated, that was mostly from impact fees. Utility operating expenditures were a hundred and forty-three thousand under budget, including encumbrances. We saw many of the same savings trends here, as in the general fund, personnel savings due to vacancies, lower software maintenance costs. There was also reduced GBRA expenses compared to the budget. For capital projects, we budgeted about six point one million dollars and spent roughly two point four million during the year. These projects are multi-year efforts and will continue into the new budget year as part of our capital improvement plan. So after accounting for depreciation, which is the non-cash expense for wear and tear on infrastructure, the utility fund shows an operating loss of about five hundred and eight thousand dollars. This is an improvement over budget and remains consistent with our expectations as we continue reinvesting in the system. So as we wrap up the utility fund, we can see how all of that translates into the overall financial position. The utility's net position increased by approximately one point three million dollars, bringing the total to twenty million dollars. Now, most of that is tied up in infrastructure capital assets, but we also maintain strong liquidity. We have about two point six million dollars in the operating reserve. Sorry, that slide gets jumbled sometimes, I don't know why. One point three-six million dollars in the debt service reserves, and over five million dollars dedicated to capital projects and equipment replacement. I don't know why it does that, too. Now, as part of the year-end closeout, we're implementing this new accounting rule called GASB statement number one oh one. It changes how cities record employee leave benefits. So in prior years, the city only recorded unused vacation time as a liability, and under this new rule, we must also include earned sick leave that employees are expected to use or to be paid out in the future. So this change will cause a one-time increase in the utility fund's reported liabilities. Because the, the utility fund follows full accrual accounting, similar to a for-profit business, meaning we record all long-term obligations. The governmental funds follows a modified accrual system that we only report current financial activities. So this is an accounting adjustment only. It does not affect cash flow or operations, but it will reduce net position to comply with the new reporting requirement. I anticipate this liability to be about seventy-three thousand dollars, which will be reflected in the audited financial statements. So that is not reflected here, but again, it would decrease net position by maybe seventy-three thousand dollars. Are there any questions on the utility? So in January, we'll wrap up with the audit and then bring the year-end resolution for fund balances and continuing appropriations to City Council. In February, we'll begin drafting the annual comprehensive financial report, and we'll update the five-year financial plan with the results. In March, we'll present the audit results to council and submit the ACFA for GFOA award consideration. And then in April, we'll start reviewing that five-year financial plan and start the fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven budget process. So now that we've covered the year-end financial results, I'll move on to the quarterly investment report for the quarter ended September thirtieth. So as of September thirtieth, total investment stood at thirty-three point four-two million dollars. That's up six point four-seven million from the prior quarter. This is due to the certificate of obligation proceeds. Now, the portfolio earned three hundred and ten thousand dollars in interest for the quarter and one point two-six million dollars for the full fiscal year. The investment pools continue to provide competitive yields and remain a safe, stable option. But this new fiscal year's budget includes funding for investment advisory services. So I do plan on bringing an agreement to council, probably next quarter, to help further optimize the city's investment returns. But that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
You always look at me. I always have them, right? I'm good.
Good?
I think we all do.
I know, I felt it.
All right, good job, Summer, thank you.
Thank you.
That completes the agenda items that we had for the, the council meeting tonight. Does any council member have any announcements that they'd like to make? Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to wish one of my very best friends a happy birthday today, April. Happy birthday, April.
And she's a resident of Fair Oaks Ranch, too?
She is.
Anybody else? Got three quick announcements. City manager put it out to council, but we did get the current construction estimate for redoing Old Fredericksburg Road. And estimated initially at one million, the current estimate came back from Bear County at six hundred and twenty thousand. We're now working with, well, the city manager and Public Works working with Bear County to get a new inter-local agreement in place. And once that has been accomplished, it'll be brought back to City Council for consideration on moving forward with the inter-local agreement, which will then, if we agree with that, will move forward with reconstruction of the road. So we're moving forward with it, so far. Second announcement, everybody may have seen it. If you're traveling eastbound on I-ten and you exit at the Fair Oaks Parkway exit, they have now realigned the lanes there, and so there is only one lane that turns left. That's part of it, and the second piece is not everybody has gotten used to it. So there are still people that are lining up in the second lane that used to turn left. So I just ask that everybody be careful there until everybody gets used to the new left-turn laneage there. And last announcement I have is youth court. They held it twice today. Youth court is being conducted with fifth graders from Van Robb Elementary, and they get an opportunity with the judge to run through a, a full court proceeding with the children doing the actual job of running the court. So very instrumental. They'll do their last one tomorrow, it'll be right here in this room, eleven-thirty to one, I believe it is. Starts at eleven-thirty, I remember that part. All right. Scott, that was all the announcements I had. Do you have anything else to add to it?
Nothing further.
Does any council member have anything that they'd like added to a future agenda?
Yes. More of just a formality, because it's already coming to the agenda, but just for the sake of getting the word out, right? So when we went through the tree ordinance last time, and I, I made the comment to a few of you that I feel like it can be done better, right? So what I did was I reached out to the city of Burnie. Scott tagged along as well, we had a meeting with their environmentalist, and they gave us a little presentation on what they had just given to their council. And what we learned together is, you know, they are both more restrictive and more lenient in, in some areas in their, in their tree policy, depending on what you're trying to do and, and what the tree's ultimate owner would be, I guess. In that, we learned, you know, step one would be kind of just have a tree permit, right? And it doesn't have to cost a lot, or it can range to cost replacement for the tree and a tree giveaway, or, you know, there's some questions that are still open there that we're trying to figure out. But that would be the request, which it's, it's already coming, I believe, in, in January. I think it'll be on an agenda.
February, March timeframe is what we're looking at now for, to bring.
Pushing it back a little bit. But we, we, we've still got some questions on it, but it, it is going to come back to council. And anybody that has questions, just ask us, you know, and I like, I like trees just like I like ditches, too, so, I mean, I, I'll talk about them both, you know?
So tree ordinance?
Tree, tree permit, step one, and then let's see what we can do there. Yeah, well, you have to have a permit to cut down a tree. Right now, you don't have to have a permit to do anything, right? You, you can just go out there and do it. And what? And what we're looking at now is...
Don't need to go through the whole justification of it, I'm just, what do we need to look at to make sure we cover what you're looking for on a future agenda?
Tree ordinance that would include a tree permit, but for sure the tree permit, you know?
I have a question or comment for Scott, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Has the city, or can the city put out any sort of notification on social media or wherever, reminding them of that change on the I-10 turn? Because I go through there once a day, every time I go through there, I witness a near accident, including twice with my own vehicle, and then I get honked at like I'm the crazy person, and I was the one who was following the law. And I know, and I know the painting is very clear, the signage is very clear, but I think people are operating under muscle memory, and my assumption is that most people making that turn into the city, a fair probability are probably city residents, so I don't know if we can aid with that communication, just to send out the reminder, because if there hasn't been an accident there, I'd be shocked, because I, I see a near one every day.
Yeah, we can certainly put out a notice, and I'm looking at Jim and probably making promises, but maybe we can put a little diagram on there or something, do you do? Hope it will give, get what the new flow is, how it's supposed to work.
Seems self-explanatory, but it, you witness, you know, otherwise.
Wait till people are running for their Big Macs. Any other council member having an item they want to add to an agenda? All right. Good?
Yeah.
Christine, anything I missed? Anything else we need to cover?
No, sir.
Scott, anything from your position?
No, sir.
I have the time now, it is 9:16, and we are adjourned. What were those, what were those pink ones? Let me see, the other one you had. Uh, there was another one, yeah. Karen bought me some of those, and I'm hooked on them.
I'm sorry? Yeah.
Are those like the round, round, multicolored?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, nine, right, tomorrow?
Nine. Are you set?
I have it all printed out and ready. I practiced it a few times.
I'm not gonna do much, so I'll just welcome everybody, thank them for coming. I don't, yeah, I don't wanna take away from yours, so. These? Karen bought me a big bag of those.
Oh, so, Ruben just gave me one, I'm like, he was like, ah, yeah.
I had some on the way up here tonight.
This is gonna be my dessert. I had, what did I have?
Good job.
Herden cats?
Herden cats.